Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this February 1st, 2021, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. I'm going to start our meeting as we always do. If you'd please stand and join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies for the tardiness of our start. We're a couple of minutes late tonight. We were trying to resolve some technical difficulties with our operator who'd be taking calls for members of the public who are participating. So my apologies for that. If we could, Ms. Christensen, could you please call the role of the council?
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Loman.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussie.
Here.
Let the record show, all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are in attendance this evening. We can move on to item number three, the approval of our agenda. Council, we've had a chance to review the agenda. Any additions or suggestions to changes for the agenda? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, Coulter?
Second. Martin?
We have a motion and a second to approve this evening's agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Sorry, I didn't hear who seconded that.
That was Councilmember Martin. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We have an agenda for this evening's meeting. Next up on our agenda is item number four, a public comment period. It's a comment period of 20 minutes that we have each city council meeting, an opportunity for members of the public to comment for up to five minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. And before we get to that, we start with item 4.1, which is a response to prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. Last week, we had only one caller, Mr. David Clark. He had several questions. He asked why the Verizon application was allowed to be considered when there were already noise complaints, why the Penn Lake Townhome project was rushed through when there was a petition against it, and also asked for an apology to a January 4th caller for mischaracterizing her comments related to the fire department investigation regarding a rope that was directed at an African-American firefighter. So regarding the first two questions, indicate that we have a statutory requirement to process land use applications within a specific time period. In other words, the property owner has rights, and one of those rights within the statute is that if they make an application for some sort of land use entitlement, we have to process it within a certain amount of days. We can't not work through that. They also have rights for expanded permitted uses within the boundaries of the city code. In the case, in both cases, both the Verizon and the Penn Lake Townhomes project, letters were sent to nearby property owners and separate public hearings were held before both the planning commission and the city council because the city desires and actively seeks out public input on these applications. In both cases, a significant amount of public input was received, both inside and outside of the public hearings. And when public input is received, the city carefully considers the input and acts on it. In the case of Verizon, discretion was highly limited as the proposal complied with code requirements. And as I stated before, if it's within the city code as an expanded permitted use, that's a right that the property owner has. In the case of the townhomes at 86th and Penn, the discretion by the council was higher, but there were many competing interests at play, including a desire to provide new opportunities for homeownership within Bloomington. In both cases, while the final decision wasn't what many neighbors desired, the public input received led directly to plan modifications, and it should be noted that additional conditions of approval were added in those cases. The caller made a comment about involving legislators on the Verizon project because of the noise, so that the state noise laws could be changed. It's important to note that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, MPCA, not the state legislature, regulates noise pollution through the administrative rulemaking process. So requesting a rules change or seeking legislation couldn't have been accomplished within the required time period for the city to consider the application. And then finally, the comment about the request for an apology. I'm not planning to provide an apology. I believe that comment was directed at council members. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to speak on their behalf. Regarding the investigation that Mr. Clark asked for an update on, there is no new information. I have not heard anything, council members, from the FBI since a conversation that I had with them in late August. And that's all that there is to report on that. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Because the question, one of the questions was directed specifically at council members, I know that Councilmember Martin would like to speak to this matter as well. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, and thank you for the background there, Jamie. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but as mentioned during that last public comment period, resident had requested that I apologize for what they said was a mischaracterization of another speaker's participation in a public comment before that. So just to be crystal clear, I just wanted to share what I was doing my best to interpret that night. The quote from the resident was this. "I don't even know how many months ago, when you referred to Mr. Mayor as a quote 'crude news' being found in a firefighter's locker. I don't know when that took place, even it was so long ago. Many of us think that was done in order to make people believe Bloomington is racist, so you could impress others with your quote 'wokeness,' unintelligible, new racial equity department." It was my interpretation that the resident accused the city that in order to look woke and work on racial equity, we fabricated a hate crime. If that is not the speaker's intent, then the other possible interpretation that I can bring to mind is that they were accusing the city of just exploiting a hate crime to work on those efforts. And whichever is the case, I will not tonight, nor will I ever apologize for calling out conspiracy theories and poison that are meant to pull this community apart, and I'm not going to pretend that behavior is okay. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Caller also asked if I would be apologizing to the previous caller regarding the same comments, and I believe Councilmember Martin summed it up quite well. To review very carefully what was said in that initial call back in early January, I think any reasonable person would assume that the implication was that the city of Bloomington had created this issue in order to make itself, to make the city look better in terms of its wokeness, or in terms of, to make the city look racist. And as I said that night, and I'll say again, that's absolutely absurd. And so, as Councilmember Martin said, I will not be apologizing for a misunderstanding of this type because of what was said. If we want to have a discussion on clarification on this, perhaps we could, but I won't apologize for responding the way that I did on that evening for a comment that I assumed was directed directly at the city of Bloomington and questioning whether or not, as Councilmember Martin said, the city of Bloomington had intentionally created a hate crime in order to draw attention to itself. So, thank you for that. We can move on now to item 4.2, which is our public comment period. Public comment period, as I said, is a 20-minute period at the beginning of each council meeting where we allow callers to call in and speak on items not on tonight's agenda for up to five minutes. As we have talked about in the past, the five-minute time limit will be enforced to make sure that everybody has a fair and equitable amount of time to speak. We will not be responding, it's not a back-and-forth opportunity with, if there is an obvious misstatement of fact or a correction that needs to be made, or a fact that can be provided, a simple fact. We do do that, but otherwise, what we do is turn it over to Mr. Verbrugge at the next meeting, so we have an opportunity to actually prepare a response to callers who call in with questions or comments. So, Ms. Wilson, do we have any callers on the line for our public comment period?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our operator this evening is Erica. Erica, do we have any callers that wish to speak to the council on agenda item 4.2, the public comment period?
At this time, I would like to inform everyone, in order to ask a question, you may press star one on your telephone keypad. We don't have any questions as of this time. Please continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any callers. As we had talked about through the month of January, we moved the public comment period to the start of the agenda for city council meetings, primarily to do a couple of things, to make sure that we have a set in relatively specific time when callers could assume that the public comment period would be taking place, and to not have them then sit through introductory items, not have them wonder exactly when we're going to get to the public comment period. So, we have set this as a specific time, and I think I've said a couple of times, my intention then was also, as we've set this time specifically, if we don't have any callers calling in, what I'd like to do is close the public comment period and move on. Sometimes we have doubled back. It interrupts the flow of the meeting, and it's kind of cumbersome. So, we did it from the month of July, or the month of January, excuse me, we left it open into the full 20-minute period. What I'm going to do tonight, and starting and moving forward, is we're going to take this opportunity, if we have no callers, we're going to close the public comment period and move on with the rest of the agenda. So with that, I will close tonight's public comment period, and we can move on to our introductory items tonight. And item 5.1, which is our monthly COVID-19 update. We have Dr. Nick Kelly from our Department of Public Health come in at the first meeting of each month and give us an update on COVID-19 in the city of Bloomington. Good evening, Dr. Kelly, and welcome. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. This morning, Bloomington Public Health completed its 16th COVID-19 vaccination clinic. We vaccinated 1,382 people with their first dose of the vaccine. We're starting our second-dose clinics while working to increase our ability to vaccinate our community. We continue to vaccinate healthcare providers in the third priority group of Phase 1A. This group includes unaffiliated clinics, dentists, mental health providers, and specialty providers serving our community. As resources to support vaccination grows and the vaccine supply starts to increase, we look forward to being able to provide these critical vaccines to more people in our community. While we are grateful for the incredible demand, we continue to ask for patients from the community, keep monitoring the city's website and our COVID-19 vaccine hotline at 952-563-4960 for more information. These vaccines are another tool in our toolbox and are a light at the end of the tunnel. Vaccines are our exit strategy for this pandemic, and as we prepare for the exit, we need to be sure as few of our neighbors as possible get COVID in the coming months. Since it will take us time to roll out vaccine to everyone who wants it, we have to stay vigilant and focus on limiting times in crowded places, confined and enclosed spaces, and with close contacts. Wear a mask that covers your nose and mouth, contains two or more layers of washable breathable fabric, and fits snugly over your face without gaps. Don't take chances with your neighbors, coworkers, friends, or classmates. Stay home if you feel unwell and get tested for COVID-19. If you're restarting activities, get tested. If you are a young adult returning to sports, extracurricular activities, or college, please get tested. We have fantastic resources for testing at Creekside. Use them. While the case rate is trending downward at this time, it is easy to let your guard down. The CDC estimates that in 2020, 83 million Americans were infected with COVID-19 and over 4 million were hospitalized. The CDC projects over 500,000 Americans will die from COVID-19 by February 20th. I fear we've become numb to the profound impact COVID-19 is having. In Bloomington, we've lost 136 of our neighbors and have seen 452 hospitalized from COVID. Our seven-day rolling average of new cases at the end of January is now around 20 cases per day, similar to where it was in mid-October. Our case rates simply remain high. This is a concern because of what is on the horizon, the variants of COVID-19. There are three variants of concern that have emerged associated with COVID-19, B.1.1.7, B.1.351, and P.1. These variants have all emerged independently and in geographically unique places. Two of the three variants have been detected here in Minnesota. This confirms what we suspected, that they are already here. The primary cause for concern is the increased transmission risk associated with these variants, a transmission rate that's 50% to 70% higher than the previous strains of the virus. The B.1.1.7 is the variant causing significant challenges in the United Kingdom and Ireland. The CDC projects that B.1.1.7 variant will become the dominant strain in the United States in March. This means we can expect increasing cases in the coming weeks, with a strain or strains more transmittable than we have previously experienced. These variants in our current high caseloads are very concerning. I continue to talk with people who are tired of dealing with this pandemic. They are frustrated with the pandemic and want to return to the way things were before we knew what COVID was. I remind them that I feel the same way, but the reality is, this is our new normal. I'm frustrated, angry, sad, dismayed, and exhausted. I assume just about everyone is feeling these emotions, too. Nobody asked to be in this situation. State and federal guidance continues to change and evolve. That is the nature of this pandemic response. One of the reasons the response is constantly evolving is it improves with the science. The virus infecting our neighbors is always looking for the opportunity to infect more when we let our guard down. I look forward to the day when I can tell you that we've successfully controlled COVID-19, but that's months from now. This is a marathon, not a sprint. You've heard me mention Dr. Mike Ryan, who's leading the COVID-19 response for the World Health Organization, and his approach to dealing with COVID-19, and I encourage everybody to follow his guidance. He asks himself three simple questions on his daily routine. What can I do to avoid getting COVID-19? How can I avoid unintentionally spreading COVID-19? And what can I do to be kind? This is how we live with COVID-19. We make conscious choices daily to protect ourselves, our community, and show kindness. We control our own destiny in this pandemic. Keep being vigilant and kind to one another. Much like the increasing daylight we're getting daily, the light at the end of the tunnel is growing brighter. While the journey is not getting easier, we're going to get through this together.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Couldn't agree more. I know that there's frustration, there's impatience, there's just boredom with all of this, and I understand it. We're pushing a year now that we've been doing this, but your point that it's balanced with the fact that a half a million Americans will be dead by the end of this month of this virus, and that number is absolutely staggering in my mind, absolutely staggering, and it didn't have to happen. And it's sad, and it's disappointing. So, please, do heed Dr. Kelly's advice, heed his warnings. Please, let's continue to keep ourselves and our neighbors safe. I think it would be absolutely terrible if we're, as we get to the end of this pandemic, that our neighbors get sick and die because we can see the end of the light of the tunnel. So please do, please do keep your guard up. Councilmember Coulter, a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, just a couple of quick questions for Dr. Kelly here. These were raised at the community conversation I had on Thursday night, and I'll just ask both of them, and you can kind of respond as you see fit, but folks were wondering, you know, given the logistical challenges that have been experienced as far as vaccine distribution, if there is any role for, you know, the, for Bloomington's Public Health Department or the city at large in sort of assisting with that effort and what we might be able to do. And then there was also a question about whether or not there are plans for vaccine clinics in sort of cooperation with the school district.
Dr. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter. The logistics behind the vaccine distribution are incredibly challenging and frustrating. That's a common thing that all of our staff are familiar with and experiencing. We are actively vaccinating. As I said, we've done 16 clinics. We got, I believe, three more scheduled this week, and we are working as quickly as we can to get through our 1A priority populations. These clinics are being run by public health staff, members of our fire department with support from others from around the city, helping us do this work. It is an amazing effort to continue to see our city staff and our public health division and our fire departments and our police department really rallying around to make this happen and work. And so, we're really proud of that work. We're going to keep doing it. As far as vaccinating with the school districts, we have plans to support the school district in vaccination. The state has rolled out additional opportunities to vaccinate educators. We are not allowed to start vaccinating educators as a priority population until we finish vaccinating our healthcare workers. That list continues to grow, and we're working through it as quickly as we can, but it is possible that many educators will get vaccinated through some of the state processes, and if they don't, we will take care of that when we have the opportunity to. We have vaccinated a few hundred school district employees that are considered healthcare providers based on the job they do, and will continue to do what we can to support the school district in providing public health guidance and support through this process.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Kelly, you mentioned the number of vaccinations that are being done here in Bloomington. Any idea how many tests are being conducted daily at Creekside?
Mr. Mayor, the last update I'd heard, we were doing somewhere between 300 to 400 on a routine basis. There, it continues to be one of the best-performing test sites in the metro.
Well done. Well done. Thank you. Council, if there are no other questions? There's no other questions. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Kelly, for the work that you're doing and the work that everybody in public health is doing, and all the folks working on this for and in the city of Bloomington. Thank you much for the work that you are doing. With that, we will move on to item six, which is our consent agenda for this evening. Councilmember Carter has our agenda, our consent agenda. Councilmember Carter?
I do. So, obviously, I will be holding 6.1 for our donations, and then I have not heard of any other holds, but I will do one last.
Can we hold 6.5?
6.5. There you go. Anybody else? All right. So with that, I will move to approve 6.2 through 6.4.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept item 6.2 through 6.4 of our consent business. Hearing no further discussion from the council. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. So why don't we start with item 6.5, if we could, and then we'll double back to 6.1? Item 6.5, I think that was Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, you know, and I didn't want to drag this out very long. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew, and generally, that the council, you know, I'm sure has also reviewed this, knew about the comments that we're making to the Xcel Energy's 2020-2034 Integrated Resource Plan, especially since we're working with so many different entities to bring forward some comments and some things that are real priorities when it comes to our strategic priorities, not only with sustainability, but also with respect to several of the other priorities that we have in terms of equity and inclusion and health in all policies, kind of really wraps all these things together here within this particular letter that we are sending off, a letter of support with respect to how energy is going to be used over the next 10 to 20 years in the state of Minnesota and try to bring it into our sphere of reducing different forms of energy that are used within the community. I'm not sure if staff wanted to comment on this to give some more specific details, but I want to just kind of give a overview of that.
Mr. Verbrugge, can you help with this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just looking over to Chris to see if we have Emma Strass, our Sustainability Coordinator, on the line.
We do.
I want to invite Emma to make a comment.
Good evening, Ms. Strass. Are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Loman, I don't have any additional details to provide other than that the Sustainability Commission motion to approve this letter and work with the other cities that have reviewed recommendations for Xcel. So, by February 11th, the public comment period will close, and so, as Councilmember Loman mentioned, this is focused on equity and making sure that there's inclusion in conversations with resource planning moving forward.
Mayor, if there aren't any other comments, I'm happy to move this.
I was just going to make one additional comment, Councilmember Loman and Mr. Mayor, if that's okay. In the letter, since some folks may be watching and haven't gone through the packet, this is a joint letter from a number of cities, and I think it's just always good to kind of call out and point out what our objective is here, and I know the council's going to hear from our Sustainability Commission Chair later this evening. But in the letter, it identifies a couple of really important goals for the city related to sustainability. Our carbon reduction goal is 75% by the year 2035, so within the next 50 years, that will reduce our carbon output by 75%. And then our energy goal is a 95% reduction in citywide electricity-related greenhouse gas emissions. So, we have some bold and audacious goals, and we're working with other cities to influence organizations like Xcel Energy, who have a very important role in advancing these targets as well. So, thank you, Councilmember Loman, for giving us the opportunity to talk about it.
Yes, thanks much for, Councilmember Loman, for bringing that up, and looking forward to the discussion with the Sustainability Commission in just a few minutes here. So, if, council, any other questions or comments on this? If not, Councilmember Loman, would you like to move it?
No, I'll go ahead and move to sign the final version of the Minnesota Local Government Coalition Letter to the Public Utilities Commission regarding the Xcel Energy's 2020-2034 Integrated Resource Plan. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Martin, to accept item 6.5 in our consent agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Let's go back then to item 6.1, which is our resolution to accept donations. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, thank you. So, we have had a handful of donations. I just want to call out each of them. We had a couple donations to our public health department through United Way donors, as well as the Senior Blue Book, and then we had two very generous donations to our police department. So, Dan Plant, who donated 500 face shields, and then Rosemary Townsend donated, contributed a very generous donation and has donated this amount over the past three years for the police department's checkup from the NECA program, and that was a donation of $20,000. And so, want to extend our sincerest thanks to her, as well as the other donors who really help our city out and help our public health department out, our police department out, and in all of the other ways that people contribute. So with that, I would like to ask staff to follow up with the appropriate thank yous, and I will move to approve the donations as listed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Martin, to accept donations. And yes, absolutely, we always do send out the thank yous, and staff, I know, does a very nice job, but boy, a gift of that size specifically for the police department and for the mental well-being of our police officers, I think that's very generous and very thoughtful. So, thank you so very much for that gift. Council, any additional comments? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We can move on then to item seven on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and item 7.1, which is a which is a resolution regarding the temporary pandemic housing. And we've been having this discussion. I know that the Planning Commission had a couple of meetings on it, talking about a resolution to create some zoning flexibility and putting together some regulations specifically for temporary pandemic housing as it relates to the global COVID-19 pandemic. And I see Glenn Markagard from Planning. I see Heather Worthington, I believe, our Community Development Director is going to lead us off on this. Ms. Worthington, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm going to kick off this discussion this evening and then hand it over to Glenn Markagard, our Planning Manager. So this evening, we are bringing you a resolution on temporary pandemic housing. You can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. I want to start by just kind of giving you context for where we are today and setting the table for our discussion. First of all, as we all know, the realities of COVID-19 have been significantly impactful on housing and especially on the homeless community. Traditional shelters, which are typically structured in such a way that people sleep pretty much shoulder to shoulder on mats or on cots, cannot achieve social distancing in those traditional shelter settings. And so the shelters have had to find alternate locations for some of their clients who had either medical reasons to need to be socially distanced or were elderly and fit into other demographics that might make them more vulnerable to COVID-19. At the same time that was happening, business and leisure travel was slowing dramatically, primarily because of many states' regulations around travel and/or considerations of public health concerns around flying. And then hotels then became a very viable option for shelter providers based on that low occupancy and very reduced rates. And in fact, Hennepin County and Ramsey County both have been utilizing hotels widely for shelter in order to achieve social distancing guidelines. But in Bloomington, hotels are designed and zoned as a transient use. In other words, you are not intended to live in them. You're intended to stay for a, a stay of no more than 30 days and, and oftentimes just a few days. Next slide. The goal of this resolution tonight is to respond to the current issue and to address this immediate need that is exacerbated by the pandemic itself. And it has a very narrow purpose to focus on really how best to address the temporary use of hotels as a shelter and to minimize potential negative impacts. It does not allow the use of hotels as a shelter use beyond the pandemic. And it does not address the long, the issue, excuse me, the issue of long-term homelessness in the city and around the city. And it does not address the use of hotels by individuals as affordable housing. So it is extremely narrow. Next slide, please. And the policy guidance for this approach is found in Forward 2040, within the housing element of your comprehensive plan. Goal four, to enhance access to specialized housing and services, and Strategy 4.2, to support efforts to address homelessness. Next slide, please. There were a couple of executive orders that the state of Minnesota issued. First was an eviction moratorium early on in the pandemic to protect people who may be less stable in their housing from being dislocated during the pandemic for non-payment of rent. And the city had a couple of programs, both with Hennepin County and individually, to address the need for rental assistance during the pandemic. And the next executive order actually addressed the closure of encampments. So throughout the metro area, there have been a number of areas where homeless individuals have been living outdoors, either in tents or in other structures. And it defined that, that order defined housing, shelter, and homelessness prevention staff as essential workers. It limited the ability of cities to conduct sweeps of those encampments and to dislocate those residents. And it directed residential shelter facilities and services to make 24-hour shelter available as soon as possible to the maximum extent practicable and in compliance with the CDC guidance, again, to socially distance people as much as possible and to prioritize that distancing for medically fragile or elderly people. The final executive order that was involved with homelessness was a more recent order which revised the guidance on the encampments and directed communities to create safe housing and sheltering options for people experiencing homelessness. So I will hand it off to Glenn Markagard now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Worthington. Good evening, Mr. Markagard.
Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, good evening. The Planning Commission had a lot of discussion on this issue at three meetings in November and December. And they really focused on two issues, namely the process that would be used and the standards that would apply. So in terms of process, we originally looked at an interim use permit process and later pivoted to the resolution approach. And that pivot was primarily based on Planning Commission recommendation. They prefer the resolution approach because we can put it into place more quickly. We can have faster processing of applications approximately one week through the resolution approach versus about seven weeks through the interim use permit process. And then what's, once it's in place, it's more flexible and easily amended down the road if we need to amend it. In terms of standards, the Planning Commission felt strongly that the city should avoid requirements for rezoning and should prioritize proximity. And I'll talk a little bit more about that one. So again, the Planning Commission does recommend the process that's before you, which is a resolution that would authorize zoning flexibility during the time of the pandemic. This is the model that we use for flexibility on patios and outdoor dining. And that's gone successfully. It also follows the governor's orders for flexibility during the pandemic. So what we would have, the service provider and the hotel would collaborate and submit an application. And then that application would be reviewed at the staff level. And staff would take action on that application. So a variety of divisions would be involved. And this is in contrast to the interim use permit process, which would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and then the City Council. In terms of recommended standards, the resolution includes requirements for a security plan. That would be approved by the police chief. Fire safety plan would also be required, would be reviewed and approved by the fire marshal. There are requirements for a management operations plan, as well as various building and site requirements. It's also a requirement that the applicant submitted a transition plan. And that would talk about, once the pandemic is over, how would the use transition back to the regular hotel use? And the resolution specifies that that transition must take place no more than 180 days after the earlier, either the expiration of the governor's emergency orders or the City Council rescinding the resolution. There's also requirements in the resolution that the hotel and the service provider allow for periodic inspections of the site. So these are all standards that would apply to either existing or new facilities. And then we also have recommendation that additional requirements, locational requirements would apply to new sites only. So there are four location requirements. Again, these would apply to new sites only. First requirement is that the facility be within one half mile of transit. And the way we're defining that is within a half mile of either a bus stop or a transit station that has half hour service or better in the peak period and that has some level of weekend service. And on this map, those are the areas that show up in blue. All of those areas qualify. Second requirement is that the facility be within a half mile of either a grocer or a pharmacy. Wherever we have full-service grocery or pharmacy in the city, we have a lot of ancillary commercial services in that general vicinity. So this requirement basically says that a new facility should be within reasonable walking distance to a commercial area where residents can find services that they might need. Third, well, I should note that those areas show up in red on the map. Then the third requirement is a prohibition, and that's within airport safety zones where the MSP airport zoning ordinance prohibits residential use. And when those areas show up on the map with this black white hatched area. And we do have six hotels that fall within that safety zone. And then finally, we would have a prohibition within single-family and townhome zoning districts. Now, none of our hotels currently fall within those zoning districts. So the city has 47 hotels today. We've looked at all of them and 25 would need all four of these requirements that, again, would apply to new sites only. And then 22 would not meet that standard. At this point, I'll shift the presentation back to Heather Worthington.
Thank you, Glenn. Sorry, my video was not working. Thank you, Glenn. This evening, I also just want to mention that we did a significant amount of engagement around this resolution. We did distribute the Planning Commission packet to our shelter providers, which include, excuse me, Hennepin County, our Savior, and St. Stevens. We held a public hearing on the IUP ordinance approach with the Planning Commission. And we sent a notice via email to e-subscribe groups on two occasions. We also reached out through the city website and posted information about the proposed amendments. And then we sent a letter to stakeholders, specifically to hotel owners in the city, and included that correspondence in the council packet. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So the next steps involved in, in the process after you consider the resolution this evening and if you approve it, would be a draft application, which is attached in your packet, a collaborative process between the service providers and hotels, as Glenn mentioned, wanting to get those service providers and the owners of those buildings working together to make the application. They would need to apply within 30 days, and then that would be reviewed by the city staff, planning, environmental health, police, fire licensing, building and inspections, and the HRA. And then if adopted, the resolution would become effective immediately. So that 30-day clock would be ticking beginning this evening. Upon expiration of the governor's stay-at-home order, then the 180-day transition timeline would begin. So again, we envision that this is a very temporary solution to, to this situation and to maintaining the city's zoning authority as we go forward through the remainder of the pandemic. Next slide. I think that might be the last slide. This is the motion we are asking you to consider this evening. We're happy to stand for questions now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? I see Councilmember Beloga. I also want to point out that in addition to Mr. Markagard and Ms. Worthington, we do have Megan Rogers from our legal team here as well. So if we have any legal questions, we'd have those answered as well. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glenn, you had mentioned a couple times that the provisions of the application only apply to new applicants. What about the hotels that are currently housing? I presume that they will also need to file for the application, but may not have some of the restrictions applied to them, such as the zoning restrictions and bus line and distance to certain facilities. Is that a correct interpretation?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, that is correct. We will require those providers and hotels to apply, but because they are existing, they may not meet the zoning requirements of the resolution. Nonetheless, they will be held to the same standard in terms of the length of time that they will be allowed to operate after the expiration of the state's executive orders.
Thank you. So early on, well, not early on, but for quite some period of time, we had some degrees of difficulties with some of the hotel sites. And I didn't find any revocation of the ability to continue to operate as a shelter if the state of requirements are not followed. Can you speak to that for me, please?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, are you speaking about some of the increased police calls that we had at a couple of locations?
Specifically, yes.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, our Police Department has worked extremely closely with the owners of those properties and with the providers themselves to address those ongoing security and safety issues. And while they have not been eliminated, they have decreased substantially over the last few months. And I think we have established a good working relationship with those providers and with the owners of those properties to ensure that we don't see the, the scale and severity of public safety concerns that we saw last summer. And so I think things have improved. I think they will continue to improve. And so that's, that's something that we've put a significant amount of time into, as have the providers and the property owners.
Thank you for that response. To follow up on that, Ms. Worthington. My question also was with respect to revocation. If the application is not, you know, the requirements of the application, such as a security plan or fire safety plan, are not being adhered to through the course of time?
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga, Mayor Bussey. This resolution would give us additional regulatory authority over those property owners and providers. So if the elements of this resolution are not adhered to by those entities, then the city can take additional action. And a permit could be revoked, and the council can revoke permits at any time.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those responses. I'll give the floor to others at this point.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. So Ms. Worthington, if I could, we'll get to Councilmember Carter in just a second. I know you've got a question, Councilmember. So just to be clear, the recommended standards that we see on our screen here of, these would apply to anyone applying for a new, the new ability to house homeless population in the hotels. But in addition, the existing hotels would have to meet these recommended standards. They would need a security plan. They would need a fire safety plan, management and operations plan, building and site requirements, transition plan, inspections. The only thing that they would not necessarily be held to is the location requirements because they're obviously an existing facility. So, but the other standards that are recommended there, our current hotels that are operating as shelters would be required to, to meet these requirements. And, and if not, the city would have enhanced regulatory authority to deal with it. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey. That is correct. You said it much better than I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, for clarifying that. Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Heather, you just mentioned that there were some pretty significant public safety concerns in 2020. And so I understand that there will be a security plan in place, but I'm wondering if you could speak to how in, increased amount or a number of medical incidents would be handled? Because I know that there, a surprising amount of the public safety-related calls were due to medical incidents. And so just, you know, for the benefit of those who are watching and have been concerned about this issue, I guess I just want to. who are watching and have been concerned about this issue, I guess I just want to make a point that a significant number of calls were medical, and then, again, moving forward, how would we make sure those are being addressed by the applicants?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter. We have had a significant number of medical calls at at least one of the locations. Early on, we had them at several locations. There are two things that have happened since, I would say, midsummer. The first is that back in the fall, late fall of 20, the two providers, St. Stevens and Our Savior, began working with HCMC and a special program that they offer through their EMT program, which is to have a paramedic onsite at that location to assist with minor or calls that can be answered or addressed there onsite without transportation. So that's been a significant improvement in terms of addressing some of those medical calls. The second piece that I think is equally important is that the security, that, I'm sorry, the owner of the property has twenty-four-hour security onsite, and they've been working very closely with the police department, and I think utilizing the police department's administrative authority for issuing things like trespass notices and tickets, and I think that that has been a significant improvement in terms of people accessing the site who are not living there, which has been more of an issue lately, and so that's something that I think is being addressed. Again, not perfectly, but we think it's improving considerably in terms of the relationship that's been built between the police department and the provider and owner.
So, moving forward, if there were to be new sites or new applicants, I assume then that the plan to address any kind of increase in medical incidents, they would have to have that in their management and operations plan to prepare for that?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter, they would be required to have a security plan that is very substantially similar to the security arrangements that are in place with the current providers.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor, and Ms. Worthington. So, the council revokes a permit for a hotel after we have problems that don't seem to get resolved. What happens to the residents?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Loman, if the permit was revoked, if we were not able to achieve the goals that we have within this resolution, working with our partners, revocation would be a last resort, but it would result in the displacement of those individuals. So we are currently and will continue to take a long and intentional process towards compliance with the providers rather than merely revocation.
I guess I don't understand that, because I thought with the governor's order, we wouldn't be able to displace folks. Help me understand how that works.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman, Mayor Bussey. The eviction moratorium that the state currently has in place does significantly limit our authority to revoke a license in this case that would result in displacement. It does not entirely eliminate our ability to do that, but it does severely limit how we do that, and it has to be extremely, has to be obviously extremely thoughtful and a process that encourages compliance rather than merely enforcing.
Thank you for that clarification on that. I just had some questions in terms of the security plan that we've got out there. Have we used this in other circumstances? You know, what's the history? What's involved with the security plan? Help me understand, you know, what those things look like and what these folks are filling out.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Loman. The security plan really grew out of a conversation that we were having with Hennepin County early on about the change in use of a particular property in the city that the county was considering acquiring, and we established a security plan, working with the police department and Police Chief Potts at the time, and so that was a process and a document that we spent quite a bit of time working on with the provider and with the police department to ensure that we were adequately covering the different issues related to security at the hotels, and a lot of those things have to do with existing regulations that the city can enforce administratively, things like the fire code, things like trespass and other features of our local or state ordinances or state statutes. And so that has been, that's been something that our partners in the police department have handled, and we're happy to provide you with that security plan that was developed as a result of those discussions, and I think formed the basis of the plan that's referenced in the resolution this evening.
Yeah, I would like to see that plan, and I'd also be curious about, you know, I'm not sure if we got anybody from the police department that could talk about those conversations, because I am, one of the things I'm interested in, you know, we talk about our strategic priorities around, you know, not only making sure that our neighbors are kind of, you know, the different commercial businesses are kind of, you know, kind of set up and protected in terms of their commerce. I know some responses I'd gotten from folks, you know, in terms of folks loitering and, you know, being kind of a nuisance, you know, in their eyes, but then on the other hand, we have our strategic priority around equity and making sure that folks that are coming here feel welcome in our community, no matter what their plight, and so I'm curious about how the police chief, they're going to balance those two interests that we have within that security plan. I'm just real curious about how that's going to work and how that's going to kind of operate out there in the field, because I know that, you know, cut from both ends of the spectrum, we could have issues, and I want to know how we're proactively looking towards that. Certainly, the conversation with Hennepin County, and that was certainly within the packet, I'm just curious about how they deal with those two priorities. So I'm not sure if there's a chief police available, if there's somebody who could talk to, speak to that, I'd just be curious about that.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Loman. We do have Chief Hartley on the line. I think he can speak to this if he is available.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Loman, I think, obviously, those are really great points. Just to kind of build on what Heather Worthington said, the communication that exists today compared to six months ago is night and day. We weekly meet with members of the hotel staff and along with police personnel, community development people, environmental health, so that everybody's on the same page. That's the importance of being on the same page, is that our expectations of how we expect security to run, everything from how we respond to medicals to how we respond and issue trespass warnings, so that we lay out the clear expectations and what we have found and to what Heather has commented on, our calls for service are dropping, the number of arrests out of the hotels are dropping, and, you know, part of that was in response to the concerns from people that live in the neighborhoods and letting them know that it wasn't necessarily the people that were staying or displaced temporarily in the hotels. I hate to admit it, but it was the people that were coming to visit those people, and so just kind of tightening up the access points in and out of the hotels and just stronger communication, I think, went into developing a security plan that addresses not only, like I said, those that are staying there, but also those that are looking to kind of almost prey on those folks that are temporarily displaced by bringing a criminal element to those locations. So we can get a copy of the security plan to you. I think it has evolved in a nice direction over the last several months, and one that can be utilized at other potential sites for housing people.
I really want to thank both, you know, Chief Hartley and Ms. Worthington, really ensuring that, you know, that the public's concerns were heard. We took action on those things, and for those folks that were coming in there, you know, in terms of being treated equally and equitable situation, those things were also put together, and as we move towards possibly passing this piece, we'll continue to be proactive as the Bloomington Police Department has been on all these occasions, try to get, you know, try to strike that balance the right way, which I'm looking forward to kind of seeing with this very important piece here. Thank you both for speaking to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman, and thank you, Chief Hartley. Welcome aboard, good to have you. I'm sure we'll be seeing plenty of each other in the coming months here. Welcome aboard.
All right, well, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just got a couple of quick questions. There was discussion of two alternatives that were looked at. One was resolution, the other was interim use. Seems like the resolution was done, it's flexible, it's quicker, seemed to be a lot of benefits. Are there benefits to the interim use that we're missing out on by not having that in place?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Nelson, I'd like to ask Glenn Markergard to speak to this from a zoning standpoint.
Mr. Markergard.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, probably the biggest issue is not having public hearings through the interim use permit process. There would be a public hearing at least before the planning commission. So with this process, while it's quicker, there would not be the same level of public hearing.
All right, thank you. And I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but this only applies to a emergency declared by the governor, and this would apply to future emergencies that a future governor may order, and would it, but it does not take into account other circumstances that may lead the county or other social service agencies to look to hotels to meet some of their needs, you know, if there was a natural disaster or something like that, if there was a fire at a homeless shelter, which, you know, happened in Minneapolis and they needed to do that, this ordinance would not address those situations, is that accurate?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, no, this is limited to only COVID or a pandemic in this case. There are other provisions for emergency use of property during an emergency, and that would be in different statute in Minnesota and carried out through Hennepin County and/or our local emergency management, and that is something I would have to ask our fire chief SEAL to speak to from an emergency management standpoint, but I do believe that there are other provisions for use of property in emergencies, but in this case, this applies to the pandemic very narrowly.
Thank you, I think that makes sense, so why this wasn't looked at from a wider perspective, those other things, if there's already existing rules and procedures and processes in place for it, so thank you for that information. This is just maybe a nitpicky question, but one of the things was it had to be within a certain distance of a grocer or a pharmacy? Why an or instead of an and? Why not both? And does it matter, I mean, does it really matter? I mean, maybe most grocery stores have pharmacies, and so.
Mr. Markergard.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, I'm going to ask Glenn to answer that one as well, thanks.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, yeah, we thought of a grocer and pharmacy kind of as a proxy for a higher scale of commercial uses, as you mentioned, a, most grocers tend to have a pharmacy within them. Some pharmacies have some grocery items, but really key is that for either one, you have a lot of associated commercial businesses nearby.
All right. Next question. What happens if we approve a security plan, but for whatever reason it isn't working, there's still a number of security issues? I heard from Chief Hartley that there are regular meetings, there is clear expectations that the city is setting. Does this process allow us to continue to do that and set those expectations, or once they have an approval, are we kind of at the mercy of whether or not they're willing to do that?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, they absolutely will continue, we will continue to have meetings, the permit addresses this specifically, and we will continue to have regular meetings with the providers and with the owners of these properties to ensure that the requirements of the permit are being adhered to, and also that the security plans themselves are being carried out, and the relationship that the police department has built with these providers and owners, primarily through our crime prevention officer, Erica Brown, have been, really, I think, have really shown that there is a serious commitment on their side to address these issues and to work with the police department, and that will continue.
Thank you very much, that's all of my questions. I just would like to thank everyone that worked on this and thank the, our new chief, Chief Hartley, and the work of our police department for getting their arms around these issues and really working on behalf of the community here, so it's a great job by the whole team here, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. So I've got a couple of questions, but what I'd like to clarify here, first of all, this is a vote for a resolution by the city council. Officially, this is not a public hearing, but I know that there are folks who are watching, who are probably interested, who have comments, who would like to bring some things forward to this, and at my discretion, I'd like to be able to do that. So I'd like to bring, make this available to folks, if they do have something to talk about, if they do have questions, if they do have comments, phone number's on your screen there, please do call in, and we'll limit it to a couple of minutes, make sure we get as many people as we can, or if we, we'll get to all that we can, and also I want it to be specifically to this resolution that we're talking about right now, and if we could do that. While people are calling in, while we've got folks taking up that opportunity, I just have a couple of questions. The first, we had at least one person in the city comment about the one-hundred-and-eighty-day transition period, commenting that that's an awfully long time, especially given the rapidly changing nature of what's going on with this. So why one-hundred-and-eighty days? Why not something shorter, thirty or sixty days at the most?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmembers, Mayor. We wanted to ensure that if the governor actually suspended the eviction moratorium sooner and/or made other changes that might displace individuals, that those providers and owners had adequate time to rehouse the people currently living in the hotels, especially in the winter months. We are trying to find the right combination of time and also thinking about the logistics of relocating that many individuals.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I do understand, it does, I do agree, the six-month time period seems a bit long, but I also do understand that, given the number of folks that are, that would be staying in any of these shelters, it might take a while to find permanent accommodations for them or other accommodations, so I do understand that. The second question I had, within your report, within the staff report, there was a line that said something along the lines of that this isn't necessarily a resolution for this pandemic, but rather for the next pandemic. I'm wondering if you could address that, talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmembers. I think what we were trying to express there is that this particular situation with the pandemic created a lot of questions from a policy standpoint and from an enforcement regulatory standpoint, that we felt we spent a considerable amount of time really examining carefully and trying to be thoughtful about in terms of our recommendation to you, and so the work that was put into this particular resolution, we think will be very helpful for the next situation like this, and it may be a pandemic. We don't, we don't know, it's hard to know what will happen next sometimes, but we are hopeful that this work will pay off in the long term as well.
Thank you, and you're absolutely right, it's hard to know what will happen next, you're absolutely right.
Did you want to add anything, Glenn? I'm sorry.
Mr. Markergard, anything to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone who has called in looking to comment on this?
Erica, this is Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Erica, do we have any callers that wish to speak regarding Agenda Item 7.1?
Actually, this time, we don't have any callers connected.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you for that, thanks. We opened it and gave people an opportunity, but apparently no one is calling in to comment. Council, any additions? Counsel, any additional questions or comments on this? I see councilmember Beloga's hand up. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heather, have any, what, what approach have other cities taken with this similar issue? Have, have any of them gone to this temporary regulations or are we out in front of this?
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Beloga, I, I did some inquiries early on on this issue. I believe the city of Minneapolis has some regulatory process in place regarding the use of hotels. The city of St. Paul didn't appear to, and they were working very closely with Ramsey County. I will say that Bloomington's definition of a transient use in the zoning code was the primary, excuse me, my cat is pushing my computer on, was the primary driver behind us wanting to make sure that we addressed the land use and zoning considerations that were created by this use. And so, so that's something that I think is perhaps unique to Bloomington, but I, I don't have a, we don't, we did not survey other cities on this issue.
Thank you. A follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. In many cases, we put caps on things like this, number of pawn stores, you know, per population, per, you know, various metrics to, to control this. Is it possible that we will see a significant uptick by the creation of this resolution in more of our hotels being put into pandemic response shelters?
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Beloga, we don't anticipate that we will see a significant increase. And I say that because we understand through our work with providers, through our work with St. Stephen's, our savior, and Hennepin County, we understand their current homeless needs for shelter. And we understand that that population has, has now kind of ceased to grow. And let me explain that a little bit. So back in the summer, when Hennepin County and the city of Minneapolis were actively closing the encampments, the outdoor encampments that were, that were in some of the parks in Minneapolis and other locations, we knew that there would be an influx of people needing shelter as those encampments were closed. As of a few weeks ago, the, all of the encampments in Minneapolis are now closed. And the last census count that I heard for Ramsey County, not Hennepin County, I don't have that number, but Ramsey County had 100 people still sleeping rough outdoors, but that's down from a high of 350. So that just gives you a sense of the fluctuation of the homeless population. But we don't anticipate a major growth in that homeless population now. And Hennepin County has been relocating some of the clients that they were housing back into either shelters or permanent housing. And so we see that that trend will probably continue towards either identifying short-term or permanent housing for people and then not, not too many additional new clients for the homeless shelters themselves in the hotels.
Oh, thank you.
And I, I'm sorry, I should also add, Mayor Bussey, councilmember Beloga, that this is really where our 180 days transition plan plays out because it is difficult to predict what will happen. But again, based on information that we have, we thought that 180 days was a reasonable length of time for a transition.
Thank you.
If I, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Beloga.
One final item. Was there consideration of giving a shorter transition period that could be extended? Let's say 90 days, you know, with, with extension being available?
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Beloga, I think one of the challenges for providers right now is the predictability of this permitting process. And so I think 180 days, as, as someone else mentioned earlier, gives us a little bit more flexibility administratively. And I think that that was primarily why we, we landed on that number. There's, there's not necessarily any magic in that number, only that that's a, what we thought was a reasonable approach, given what we know about the current census of individuals living in these shelters and, and then potential growth of that number over time and then their ability to affect other housing for that population in the winter.
And the reason I ask that question is in the restaurant with the outdoor seating, we made that reasonably short views and have renewed it several times. And that seems to have been rather seamless for those facilities. So I would, you know, like a little more conversation amongst council when it's appropriate time to see if we think that we should use a similar set of criteria for this resolution as we did for our restaurateurs.
Mayor Bussey, council. I'm wondering if Glenn Markergard would like to speak to that just a little bit more in terms of the comparison between this resolution and the receiving ordinance.
Mr. Markergard?
Mayor Bussey, councilmember Beloga, these are very similar approaches. We have not done any revocations on the patio or, or outdoor seating approvals. And I think if there were problems, the enforcement would be very similar between the two approaches.
Councilmember Beloga, do you have a follow-up there?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. I do have a follow-up to one of councilmember Beloga's points when asking if regarding a cap on this. So does this resolution give us the power, the ability, if, if at any time we wanted to say, okay, that that's enough? Can we say that's enough? Or as long as hotels meet these requirements, could they continue to turn over into pandemic housing?
Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, my understanding is that you could revoke this. It is a resolution. Council has the power to revoke it. I have to defer though, on this issue to our, to our attorney in community development, Megan Rogers.
Well, and I want to clarify, I don't necessarily revoke, but if, for example, 25 of our 47 hotels qualify, if we got, you know, if, if 15 of those hotels were converted to pandemic housing and we got to a point where we've decided that's probably enough, we've got to balance some other things within the city, could we simply turn this off and say, we don't, we, we can't have anymore, we don't want anymore at this time? Is that possible? Ms. Rogers?
Mayor Bussey, yes. This resolution can be changed at any time by a vote of the council.
So it would be possible. Okay. Good to know. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any questions, mostly just some comments, but I, so I don't want to step in front of anybody if there are other folks with additional questions.
I do not see any hands up, so why don't you go ahead, councilmember?
Thank you. Just sort of a few thoughts. And the first one is more just a clarification on a question that you asked, Mr. Mayor, and a response that I, that Ms. Worthington gave that I thought was good, but may have just thrown some folks off. And while obviously, you know, the, I think her answer on how this prepares us for the next pandemic is a good one. Just to be extremely clear for folks who have not actually read the language of the resolution, this particular resolution would expire with the, with, when the governor were to cease the peace, the declaration of peacetime emergency. So this, this is, this resolution is specific to this COVID-19 pandemic as it, as it currently is, just to sort of be extra clear on that. And the other comment I wanted to make is just in terms of the 180 day transition period, I, I do think that is a, a reasonable number to go with. I think, you know, one of the things we've seen with the work that we've done on affordable housing is that even folks who are able to afford rent, you know, when they find out that, for example, their lease is not going to be renewed, more often than not, it takes them at least 90 days to find new housing. To say nothing of folks who are not able to afford rent, folks who are experiencing homelessness. So, you know, I just think with, with the way things are right now, it's, I think, better for us to, to be sort of on the longer end of that equation rather than have to authorize, you know, extensions being on the shorter end.
Thank you, councilmember Coulter. Counsel, additional thoughts on that? Additional discussion on the resolution in general or thoughts specifically on the 180 days? Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I, when I saw the 180 days, the first thing that came to my mind was our affordable housing piece. But I am, I, I do think that we ought to keep what councilmember Beloga has put forward in the toolbox for, for, for the future. Cause I think that there may be a reason why we may want to do that. And it may be tied to what you brought forward, Mayor, in terms of if we get to, you know, so many locations that have it, we may want to have a different transitional timeframe on that. But at this point, I think that that number is the right number. But I, I, I wouldn't mind putting that in the toolbox for us to utilize that going in the future, because you just never know when you might need to use something like that.
That's a good point. Counsel, others? Not hearing unless there is anything overwhelming that folks think we need to make adjustments to that 180 days. I've heard a couple of people spoke in, speak in favor of it. Beyond, and to councilmember Beloga's questions, does anybody have anything else? Otherwise, I think we leave it in and we move forward with it. But as councilmember Loman said, keep it in our toolbox and in consideration if there is a next time here. All right. Well, hearing no further discussion, counsel, if there is nothing else, this is a resolution. And we'd be looking for action, one way or another, on the resolution in front of us.
Mayor, I can make that motion.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution creating zoning flexibility and promulgating regulations for temporary pandemic housing as related to the COVID-19 global pandemic.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Martin and a second by councilmember Carter on item 7.1, resolution creating zoning flexibility and promulgating regulations for temporary pandemic housing related to the COVID-19 global pandemic. Counsel, any further discussion on this? If not, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. I want to thank the, the planning commission for the great work that they did on this. I want to thank the staff for everything they've put together and counsel for the great discussion. I think this was a very good discussion and very thoughtful. And I think it, it does move us forward now, but it also puts some good pieces in place if we ever have to look at this again. And I think that's an important thing to do. So thank you all very much for that. Well done. Thanks. With that, I'd like to call item 8.1 on our agenda. And 8.1 is is a discussion item, actually on the earned sick and safe leave ordinance that the council has asked staff to look at and provide some direction on. So as I said, discussion item, we're just going to be providing direction, feedback, no formal action on this tonight. But staff will be bringing this forward. And Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Chris Wilson will also be joining me for most of the presentation. We also have deputy city attorney, Peter Zuniga, and our racial equity coordinator, Faith Jackson, on the line. If you have questions of them as well, the four of us have been acting as a research team for this project. For the benefit of the viewers, the council's direction last year was to have staff begin exploring development of an earned sick and safe leave ordinance for the council's consideration. In Minnesota's, in Minnesota, the cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul and Duluth currently have local ordinances in place that require employers to provide some amount of paid sick and safe leave to employees. But there is not a similar requirement in place on a statewide basis. Thus, the interest by the council in reviewing whether such an approach is appropriate in Bloomington until such time that the state may act. So we have, as part of our research, talked to representatives of cities that have local ordinances. And Chris has prepared a side-by-side of those ordinances that she will walk through for you. And after walking through that and answering any questions you may have, we'll come back and talk about a possible process to move forward. And I have a couple of questions in the packet for councilmembers, which you saw in preparing for the meeting to help guide the discussion tonight. So with that quick overview, I'll turn it over to Chris Wilson, our assistant city manager.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get my PowerPoint up on the screen here. Alrighty. As the city manager indicated, there is a side-by-side comparison in your packet of the three local ordinances on this subject that are currently in place in the state of Minnesota. I'm going to hit some of the high points of those. It won't be quite as detailed as the document that was in your packet. But if councilmembers have any questions on the content in the packet, I'd also be happy to answer those. As best as my research has shown, there are approximately 14 states in the United States that have laws requiring employers to provide paid sick leave, plus several large cities and states that don't have a state law have adopted city measures. Minnesota would fall into that category of states that do not have a state requirement. But our largest cities, Minneapolis and St. Paul, as well as Duluth, have each put in place a local ordinance on this topic. The three cities have a high degree of similarity, but the ordinances are not identical. So just to start by defining what we're talking about here, earned sick and safe leave is leave that can be used by an employee primarily for two reasons, the first being for medical reasons for themselves to, if they're ill, if they need to go attend a medical appointment or seek care. Or if a family member needs to attend a medical appointment, seek care or be cared for. Secondly, would be for an absence due to domestic abuse, sexual assault or stalking. Again, for the employee or their family member, this would include attending legal proceedings, meeting with law enforcement, seeking counseling, et cetera. And then in the city of Minneapolis, they have a third component to their ordinances, and that is to care for a family member during an emergency closure of a school or childcare, including for inclement weather. So sort of a snow day provision. That's just as best I can tell in the Minneapolis ordinance. So a quick summary here of what the ordinances require to be provided. Minneapolis and St. Paul both require that employees credit their, employers credit their employees with one hour of paid leave earned for every 30 hours they work. In Duluth, it's one hour earned for every 50 hours worked. Employees start accruing immediately upon hire, but all three ordinances allow the employer to require that 90 days of service be complete before that accrued time may be taken. It should be noted, as we talk about these ordinances, that in all three cities, the ordinances establish a minimum requirement. Employers, of course, are free to grant more generous leave than what is required by these ordinances to allow employees to use it earlier in their employment, to allow more carryover, to pay it out upon separation. All of those things are permissible, but the ordinances establish a minimum or a floor for this benefit. The definition of which The definition of which employers their ordinance applies to does vary a bit between the three Minnesota cities. Minneapolis requires employers with six or more employees to provide paid leave and requires employers with fewer than six employees to still allow the leave, but it may be unpaid. In St. Paul, it applies to all employers regardless of the number of employees they have, but it is restricted to employers that have a physical location in the city of St. Paul. Minneapolis is not the case that the employer has to be located in the city of Minneapolis, only that the employee is doing work in the city of Minneapolis. Duluth has theirs defined as employers with five or more employees. Another note on this is that these ordinances may already be met by existing paid leave benefits provided by an employer. So, employers are not required to add a specific, you know, ordinance based sick and safe leave benefit for their employees if they already have benefit programs that can be used for these reasons and provide a sufficient amount of leave time to meet the requirements of the ordinance. Quick take at the process used in the three cities. All cities report to us that they use some form of task force or work group and met, those groups met over the course of several months. In St. Paul, it was 29 people over the course of three months. In Duluth, it was a smaller task force of 11 members, but they met for slightly longer and so on. Minneapolis was the first to adopt an ordinance, followed shortly thereafter by the city of St. Paul and then the city of Duluth. You can see that the time between adoption of the ordinance and its effective date varied by jurisdictions with at least nine month, nine or 10 months and as much as 18 months between adoption and effectiveness. And then my last slide here is just a quick summary of the major components of an ordinance where the city to proceed with developing one. The city would need to decide which employees are going to be covered, which employers are going to have to provide leave under the ordinance, what the amount of the benefit is, what the rules about using it, accumulating leave, carrying over leave. The city would have to determine an enforcement process for the ordinance as well as staffing for both implementation and enforcement. Cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul each have a division of labor standards within their city. For example, the city of Minneapolis, this is a division within a department, and I believe they told us they have four staff people to enforce the law. Duluth is a smaller operation and they have added one dedicated staff person for enforcement in the city of Duluth. So, like I said, there is a slightly more detailed summary or comparison of the three ordinances in your packet that gets into things like how much can an employee accumulate in each city and how much carries over from one year to the next and so on. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about those, that next level of detail. But today, we wanted to keep it at a fairly high level.
Council, any questions on that specifically? Or as Ms. Wilson said, we've got the little bit more detail in our packet. Any questions on the detail provided in the packet? Hearing none, Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, councilmembers, as the team thought about how to proceed on this, we thought about two different tracks that we could take. And this really gets at the direction we're looking for from council this evening. The first is to have a task force or a working group. As you saw from Chris's presentation, the St. Paul and Duluth both had a working group of varying size. And we know that we do have quite a healthy number of prospective stakeholders and interested parties in Bloomington. And so, the idea of having a, a working group on this is to make sure that the stakeholders are represented as participants in the process to prepare a report to city council with either options or recommendations, which would be information we'd be interested in learning tonight what your preference is. The timeline that we would be looking for would be to bring the scoping for the project back to the council in late March that would lay out the schedule for the rest of the year as well as clarifying what the charge would be to the working group. And one of the lessons that we learned utilizing the project management approach with the Community Budget Advisory Committee was how, how fundamental and important it was to have that charge be very clear to the working group so that if there are questions that come up through the process about what is expected of them, that it's known from the outset what the, what the council's expectations are. Also, in the project scoping would be the, the selection of working group members and identifying who the stakeholders are as well as the, the expert lens components related to communications and community engagement and racial equity so that we identify in the front end what the expectations and timeline will be for communicating with the community and the stakeholders at various points in the process. And then we'd look at commissioning the group in April and getting to work May through October with the, with the working group, walking through those items of six, the six items that Chris detailed in her part of the presentation. And then at the end of the year, bringing the report back to the council for consideration and possible action. The second track would be a staff and council involved process that would not for, forego public input. We would still conduct significant community engagement as part of the process, but it would not have a working group of stakeholders developing the recommendations. And I think the, the major difference in this approach is that the, the first approach of having a work group probably lends itself more to having options or a recommendation for consideration, whereas the staff and council process would be focused primarily on the actual drafting of an ordinance for consideration. So, the direction from council, if you were to go down this track, is that, yes, we want to see an ordinance prepared that we can respond to and decide then if it's appropriate to put it out. And, and we would have the, the language of the ordinance as a step in the process for community engagement to get feedback on it as well. And so, we've laid out in the packet, the potential timeline associated with the staff and council process. And in this one, what we would want to do is set aside time at least once a month at a council meeting to walk through the various elements of policy that we need the council to give direction on as we're doing that. And so, we'd, we'd have to start really by focusing on the data, understanding exactly to the best that we can what the condition is in the city of Bloomington, you know, how many employers there are, how many employers are or are not providing these types of benefits to employees. That would obviously depend on surveying our Bloomington businesses, and then the data would only be as good as what information we get back, obviously. That's going to be the case no matter what. Then talking about the program detail options, you know, how many, how many hours an employee has to work, how large the organization or how small the organization, those types of questions. We would want to have the equity impact analysis and then start talking about the enforcement philosophy as well as the staffing and resources to support it if we were to go forward. So, we have a couple of questions here that we would certainly appreciate some thoughts from the council. And, and those are these, you know, number, given the number of stakeholders in this decision, what is the level of engagement that the council would like to see amongst the stakeholders? And so, that's ranging from inform where we just provide as constant a communication as we can to update folks where we're at in the process, consult, involve, collaborate, empower. If it's empower, that's really the shared decision making. The involve would be the working group approach, and, and I think the collaborate is really making clear that the working group has a significant amount of flexibility and latitude in developing the options. Then the, the council process, which of the two, or if there's a third that council would identify. And then we've identified a number of issues that we think need to be considered as part of the policy research and development, but are certainly open to suggestions from the council if there's additional information that you think is necessary for us to pursue as we get you the information you need to make a decision. I'll stop there, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. And again, remind you, we also have Deputy City Attorney Zuniga and our racial equity coordinator, Ms. Jackson, with us.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Laid out the questions nicely. I think we, we will get to those eventually, but I'm assuming that council has additional questions, looking for more information. Council, I'm sorry, I didn't see whose hand went up first, so I'm just going to go in order that I see you here. And I'm going to go with Councilmember Coulter, Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, again, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily have any questions at the moment, but I, I thought I saw councilmembers Martin and Nelson raise their hands earlier. Maybe, I don't know, they had questions for Ms. Wilson or what, but if folks have questions, I can, I will defer for the time being.
All right. Let, yeah, let's do questions before we get into comments or, or talking specifics here. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just two quick ones, kind of touching on some things that have come up in previous times we discussed this. I guess, first, I'm just wondering about when we had discussed this kind of earlier in, in the pandemic, we had expressed just a hesitancy around capability for folks to be able to participate in an effort like this, especially in our business communities as they were trying to kind of adjust operations and, and keep things moving forward. Have, has there been any kind of informal discussions of folks to, to gauge their ability to participate in something like this?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we, we haven't asked any potential stakeholders that question specifically, Councilmember Martin. I think that we are reasonably comfortable, comfortable and confident based on our experience with SEABEC that we can run an engagement process that will provide opportunities for participation. And I think the, the benefit here is that we do have a couple of important industry representatives in the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visitors Bureau that can provide, I, I think, amplification of our message to make sure that we're reaching interested stakeholders. So, you know, I, I think the, the way that we have tried to do virtual engagement over the last year suggests that we should be able to run an engagement process that's meaningful and gives people an opportunity. To the, to the point of your question though about the, the business community's capacity to participate, I, I can't answer that question specifically.
Sure. And just kind of other quick one on this is, this is likely still TBD, but considering the fact that this has moved forward in Minneapolis and St. Paul close here, and then they came to fairly similar results when recruiting this working group, are we preferring organizations or maybe businesses that participated in those efforts and, and maybe have the background and a lot of that homework done? Or are we looking for fresh voices? Or is that all kind of still up in the air?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, I think that is up in the air. I think it would be good if the council direct staff on one of these two processes to identify critical sectors that you would like to see included or represented in the process. And I, you know, there are a couple, obviously, that are prominent here in the city are entertainment, hospitality, and leisure, leisure industries are fairly sizable. We also have, you know, some very large corporate tenants. I think, you know, one of the issues that we will want to really make sure we're reflecting are the concerns of the most impacted employers. And so, I think those are probably different employers than the ones that we're talking about. Most, you know, large corporate entities already have a package of benefits for employees. And so, trying to understand which sectors have the employers that perhaps don't already have some sort of benefit package for employees to make sure that their voice is included will be important. And so, as we bring back the, the prospective participants, whether it's through the working group approach or through the engagement targets in a staff council approach, we're going to do our very best to identify who those especially interested stakeholders are.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on the actual ordinance here, so I will do my best to avoid that. I know that's coming, you're more curious at this point in terms of the process, but the question I had was, I know there's been litigation on this, and I'm wondering if we know the status of the litigation, if it's all been resolved and how it was resolved.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, the litigation has been resolved to, the Minneapolis ordinance made its way all the way to the Minnesota Supreme Court, and they ruled last summer, either June or July, in upholding the ordinance in the city of Minneapolis. So, to the best of my knowledge, there is no pending legal challenges to the three ordinances currently in place in Minnesota.
Okay. And then I'm just going to put these all in one group, and I don't need an answer. They're just things that I, I think should be considered during this is what impact it has on union contractors, how it might imply to independent contractors, if at all likely would not. What about prevailing wage laws? And if people are meaning those, I know those happen a lot on, on construction, large construction projects. One of the other things I saw as I was doing some research is looking at, not necessarily sick time, but parents who needed to take care of children because a school was closed due to weather. Probably difficult to expand that to an entire pandemic where schools closed for a year and a half, but weather emergencies do happen. I know that's a huge concern for a lot of parents. I know one of the business concerns personally have is just the record keeping and whether or not people are going to get penalized for records that are pretty darn good but not perfect and how onerous those things are. The ability to use flex time particularly for maybe a part-time employee, if you're sick for a couple of days, could you make up those hours later? Is, I mean, I guess that I put into the category of flexibility for the businesses to meet the needs of their employees and their operations as best as possible. Again, don't want to get too much into the weeds, there's just some things on the radar that I think are important. In terms of the question about process that the city manager asked, I guess, I just want to make sure, and I guess the question is, what role would members of the business community have? And I want to make sure it's not just input that we're asking them, but they're actually, if we go further along that spectrum, that they're actually at the table making these decisions to make it work and not just something where they can provide input into a, a community-led group. So, I think that's everything I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have one quick question for Chris, and then I can just share my thoughts. In the packet, I, I believe it said that Duluth, Duluth's ordinance applies to part and full-time employees, but I don't believe I saw anything about Minneapolis or St. Paul. So, do you know if there's also cover part-time?
They do, yes.
Okay.
All three ordinances apply to all employees regardless of the number of hours worked.
Great. Okay. So, Jamie, to your questions, I would feel most comfortable moving forward with a task force approach, which I'm guessing most of the council, that's the path we probably want to go down. And as I look at that spectrum, spectrum of engagement, I guess I was leaning towards involve, kind of like right in the middle. And I do, I really want to make sure that at the very start of the task force, the members and even in that application process or however those, those people are appointed, that they're truly grounded in, you know, our values as a city and our strategic priorities as a council, just to ensure that people who are participating can, you know, bring their authentic voice and the concerns they have, but also kind of understand kind of the higher level principles and expectations that we're moving forward with as a, as a city. I also really appreciate the I also really appreciate the conversation around making sure that our business community will be involved in an authentic and meaningful way, because of course they will be directly impacted. Um, but I also want to make sure that actual workers, residents and workers are also at the table, um, particularly those in positions where, you know, they don't have the ability to earn sick and safe time or earn sick pay leave. Um, and I also would like to see or invite organizations who are serving people most impacted, like V and Oasis for Youth and Cornerstone, if they're willing and able. Um, and again, fully support our small and large businesses, um, the Chamber, uh, the Visitors Bureau, and then our union partners too. I just want to make sure that there is equal weight given to those voices. I don't want to have an overemphasis on one stakeholder, um, when, when really, you know, I, I feel like my number one priority is, is I'm here to serve residents. So, um, with that, I will end my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Coulter, did you want in now? I see your hand back up again.
I think so.
Okay.
No, yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm ready to go now. Thank you. And I, I did actually have one piece of the information that I would like to know. Um, obviously not something that can be answered tonight, but, um, you know, as it has been mentioned, a number of states and other cities have adopted earned sick and safe leave, um, policies. Um, and it would be helpful to have just sort of a, you know, as best as possible, a summary of, of the provisions of those as well. I think, you know, it never hurts to, to think as sort of broadly and creatively as possible. Um, you know, as, as far as my thought, you know, the reading through, um, what the, the packet says here in the staff's recommended approach, I think it actually, my sort of preferred approach would be somewhere, some combination of the two. And my, my preference would be that we appoint a group of, that we have a sort of working group or, or task force approach. Um, you know, I think as has been said, it, it would be more respectful of the community of, of businesses and workers. Um, and I, I think it also would be a much more sort of, uh, public process, uh, that would, would let itself both to sort of interaction, but also, um, uh, legitimacy. Um, and I, you know, to sort of echo what Councilmember Carter said, I, I want to make sure that, that we are hearing, uh, directly both from impacted businesses and impacted workers. And I, I mean, I would go so far as, you know, we, there is a number of folks have raised, you know, business does need to be involved, and I, I would say that they have to be involved. I, I don't think it is, it is optional for, for businesses, large and small, or, you know, all manner of folks to be involved. I, I think they have to be at the table. And, you know, the conversations that, that I have had with folks, both, you know, the, the folks with the Chamber and, and folks with individual businesses as well, um, suggests a real, a real desire to work towards something that, that can work for folks. And so I, I, I think there is a, a real, um, opportunity here to, to bring folks in, into the process. Um, I would just add that I, I think, um, I would, I would say it should be a requirement that folks who were to serve on this task force are willing to get to yes on an ordinance. Not that every, I want to be clear here, not that everybody has to get to yes, but that everybody is willing to get to yes. I think be, and I will, and that leads me sort of to my next point, which is that I think that the sort of the, the deliverable for this task force should be an ordinance. It should be something that staff can put together that can come before council for an up or, up or down vote. And, you know, there, there are a couple of reasons for that. Um, first of all, I think it, it preserves it, as I've said before, it preserves it as a policy decision for the council rather than a decision for another group of people. Um, you know, so it, it comes before the elected officials and, you know, we ultimately, uh, make the call. I think the other benefit to that is that it, it allows the folks, the stakeholders that I, you know, like I said, I think absolutely have to be involved. It allows them to weigh in, uh, in a, in a much more sort of specific and concrete way that, you know, folks are, are, if this is, you know, this is something that we are crafting that is going to go before the council so that they can see, you know, right in their, in their hands, what the, what the language is, what the words say. Um, so I, you know, I guess in terms of, uh, the IAP two spectrum, that would be somewhere, I would say probably around involve or, or collaborate. Um, you know, of course, any ordinance language that comes for the council can be amended by the council. Um, but I, I think that's kind of where, where I'm at. And I, I think the benefit of that stakeholder approach is then that it allows us to also, um, build on that work in the future, knowing, you know, we have other conversations about, you know, labor standards or, or something like that, that other folks have raised, um, that we have this group of folks that we can go, go back to, uh, that we have an established relationship and, and work with. So that's, those are kind of my thoughts.
Councilmember Baloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, strongly, uh, am in favor of the task force working group. And, uh, I think that's imperative because I don't know how we get to look at all sides without that. I certainly come, um, with some thoughts and biases, but I, you know, I think all of us do by nature. And what we need to do is hear, uh, from people of opposing views. So, um, I think with the right group of people, uh, selected for a task force and working group, you get that opportunity. Um, and I, uh, because you want to hear all points of view, uh, I cannot support having any set of vetting where there's a predetermined, uh, uh, outcome or question that people have to answer in a specific way to, uh, gain admittance to the, uh, working group or task force, because, uh, it limits that. We, we don't get the full and, uh, complete conversation from all affected parties if we have those kinds of things. But, uh, with that exception, I agree with what's been said earlier and, uh, support those kinds of things. So, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baloga. Councilmember Lowman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess the way that I kind of, I don't know, kind of look at this is that I look at the problem first, or I mean, it's not a problem, but more of an opportunity, uh, shall I say, is that we really have a, a very diverse, um, labor pool. Uh, those folks going to work each day, uh, trying to get their work done in their many different industries, uh, really across the city. And on the other hand, um, you know, from the business perspective, we also have a very diverse, uh, pool of employers. Um, and so when I look at those, uh, two things, um, you know, certainly, I think that CEBAC, uh, model starts to, to get to that, to that solution. But I think another, uh, you know, I like to say, you, you asked if we could do a hybrid, and I'll, I'll put one forward. I think that having a, um, having a, uh, a Dr. Johnson model person, I don't know, you know, if that's Jamie going out and looking at the different, uh, uh, folks we know that are out there, um, that, that can, uh, represent some of these different labor pools or these different, uh, businesses and ask specific questions that may be, uh, gathered, uh, through that CEBAC type process. Uh, I think might, uh, because I think this issue is, is such a complex issue. This may give us or afford us the opportunity to, um, to, to delve a little bit deeper. So what I would say is that I would support a, uh, more hybrid, uh, approach. And if the CEBAC was an example of a more empowered, um, on that spectrum, then that's what I'm supporting from that. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, making sure that we, you know, consider, uh, our diverse labor pool that we have. Um, I mean, that's why you do this, right? It's about the, the labor pool. Um, and then, you know, uh, making sure that we have business interest there to be sure that, uh, the step that we make with, uh, with labor, if we decide to go down this route, is, uh, uh, is, um, not an obstacle to being able to do business in the city of Bloomington. Uh, we want to make sure that businesses are able to, to continue to conduct their business, uh, in a way, um, uh, that doesn't restrict those that are small businesses and, um, uh, so they can be able to, to service our, uh, our, our residents here in the city of Bloomington. So, uh, when I look at the, uh, the options that are here, uh, that's, those are the things that I'd like to see, uh, if we could, uh, move forward on this, on this particular, uh, work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, uh, agree with what's been said, um, in terms of moving forward with the task force process. I think, um, as has been said, it's, it's, gets a little bit blurry, um, on that, um, IAP, IAP two spectrum. Um, because I, I would very much like to involve the public, especially leveraging, uh, these digital, um, feedback, uh, solicitation and submission tools that we have. Um, I, I think that we, they've been put to tremendous use with things like the Parks, Parks Master Planning Process, but the more opportunities we have to promote those tools, the more familiar people will get with them and comfortably using them. This seems like a great opportunity. So I'd say, uh, in terms of broad public outreach, definitely involve. And then obviously the task force itself would be something, it seems like, uh, collaborate. Um, but then also to the point Councilmember Lowman just raised, um, potentially using those tools also in a more, um, targeted way, uh, to solicit the feedback of stakeholders, uh, in a variety of, of industries, workers, businesses of all sizes. Um, but almost kind of in an amicus brief way. So folks that aren't able to directly participate on the task force, but still want to, uh, submit maybe detailed opinions on one side or the other data that they've seen, especially since, as has been noted, we've got cities across the state that have done this and people have participated before. So, uh, yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues and just hope we can, um, really leverage these, these digital tools that we have, uh, in a cool way with it.
Thank you, Councilmember. So my two cents on this, when I, and I brought this up, I think at one of our previous meetings was in relation to something else, but this adds on top of it. If we look at the Community Budget Advisory Committee, we look at our strategic planning process that we're hoping to get into. Looking at this, we are going to be hip-deep in task forces and work groups and community engagement. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. It really is. To, to not only, not only at the staff level, but at the city level. Uh, as I look at the steps in the process here and look at the timing, uh, of a, of a report to council and council consideration and action in November and December. I mean, that's, that's right in lockstep with our, with our budget process. And it's, uh, uh, it's, it would be also well into our strategic planning process. So my question is, from a staff standpoint, can we do this? From a council standpoint, can we do this? And from a community standpoint, do we have the, the, the capacity and the resources to take on some sizable things all at once like this and come up with a, a good outcome, a really good outcome? I mean, we could, we can probably get it done, but I, I, I don't think these are sizable things. These are important things that we don't want to, we don't, we don't want to do a, a crummy job on, on one. We don't want to sacrifice quality just to get the three of these things done at once. So curious for feedback on that thought.
Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, the reason that we have what I would say is a rather protracted schedule is, is to make sure that we can, um, that we can meet the council's obje- objectives here. And, uh, that's considering that we do have a lot of other things in the pipeline. Um, the real, you know, I, I'm reluctant to give you a hard and fast answer tonight because we'll want to go back and do the project scoping based on what we've heard from the council. And when we come back, um, and we've had a chance to talk to our staff and co-ed and our staff in communications and all of the other folks who will, um, need to be involved is to make sure that these are reasonable expectations on their ability to contribute to the process as well. You know, one of the things I maybe should have mentioned at the outset is that, um, we are not starting, uh, from scratch in terms of being able to identify, uh, certainly employers. I think that we probably have some work to do to identify interested parties, uh, among, uh, workers and employees. Um, and we have some contacts that will help us do that. Uh, we're in, I think, better position frankly, to, uh, get the information from the business community and the participation from the business community that we're looking for because we already have some established relationships, uh, during the pandemic when we were doing the Small Business Assistance Alone Program, uh, that we have a good number of, uh, business, uh, contacts that we have, uh, through our co-ed and our, um, community development team. Uh, we obviously have the Chamber, which represents some, you know, three, four hundred businesses in the community. And we do, uh, the, the business survey. And so the same, uh, mailing list that the National, uh, Research Council would, uh, have access to, to utilize, uh, to contact businesses, we could, uh, certainly use a contact list like that as well. So, um, we, you know, I think we're in good position to do this if the council is willing to be patient and let this roll out throughout the whole year. But if you'll give us the, you know, the latitude to work through that in the project scoping, I can give you a much better answer when we come back.
And then I'd, uh, ask the same question of the council. I mean, we're, we're a busy and active group, and everybody's got a day job to worry about and, and, and families to worry about and other things. Um, but we're, we're looking at three, you know, two or three pretty big things that the council would have to be involved with and on, on top of everything else. And so I just want to be sure that as, as we're moving forward, that this, we're, we're moving forward with eyes wide open in terms of what the expectations are going to be and what the, uh, uh, the requirements are going to be in terms of, um, uh, council involvement and, and what, how, how you're going to be involved and influencing this process. Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Coulter?
Um, I guess I just wanted to make a quick comment, um, uh, related to the city manager's comments. My understanding is the community groups are still in operation and that our community engagement team in faith are continuing to do work with them. And I almost wonder if, as we think about workers impacted, um, who may be in part-time positions or positions where there's not typically paid leave, if that would be, if those would be groups that we could ask if they're interested participants. So just an idea, not a question.
No, a good point. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, you know, I, I think you raise an, an excellent point in terms of bandwidth, you know, in terms of, of our abilities at council, but, but also, you know, the, the ability of the community. And I guess I would, you know, I would just say, you know, based on what I have seen and heard, particularly over the last couple of years, uh, you know, we are, we are not for want of opportunities for folks in our community to weigh in on the decisions that we make, uh, as a city council. I think, you know, if, if any message has been made loud and clear by any number of folks over the last few years, it's that folks want these opportunities. And, and, um, you know, we may, maybe we'll get to a point where they stop telling us that, but I, I would not expect that anytime soon. Um, so I, I have no concerns about moving forward with it from that respect. I also wanted to, to clarify a little bit, because I think Councilmember Baloga raised an, an excellent point that, um, you know, my, my preferred outcome of this process is, you know, that, like I said, my preferred deliverable is an ordinance or, or a proposed ordinance, I should say, for the council to act on. And, um, I, I guess I just want to be sure that, that, you know, where, you know, if we go forward with a task force process, which I, like I said, I think we should, that, that, you know, everyone involved is working in good faith to develop something that will work for Bloomington. That, that ultimately whatever, if that product does come before the city council, that it, if it's adopted, it's something that works well for us. So I, I just want to be clear that I, I don't, you know, folks shouldn't have to know, you know, secret pass codes and all of that to, to get into the clubhouse. But, um, I, you know, that's, that's my focus is just making sure that, uh, that, that we're, you know, everybody is working in good faith, uh, on that.
To be clear, Councilmember Coulter, you do need a passcode to get into the council chambers right now and, and all the city hall, just so we're clear on that. But I'll give you a hint. No, I'll talk to you later about that if you want to get in. Counsel, any additional, I think this is great feedback, uh, additional, uh, Councilmember Baloga?
Uh, just a couple of random thoughts, not, not needing to be addressed, but I think we need to look at the economic impact of this also. Uh, obviously, you know, if we're giving that to, uh, uh, employees, there's the obvious benefits that accrue there. But what does it do to employment? Uh, have any analysis been done on the cities who have been active this to see if it shrinks employment rather than, uh, continues an employment base? Um, I, I think those kinds of things, uh, are important to look at. Uh, even before we really get into the nuts and bolts of, uh, discussing, uh, uh, an ordinance. Uh, the other, uh, part of it that, uh, we always seem to lack is, is what does it take on a city's part? If this is enacted to administrate it? You know, is this, uh, absorbed within a current staff or is this a staff increase of, uh, X number of people? Uh, because not that we should make our judgments on those kinds of things, but what I advocate is, is that we're informed beforehand. Because that, uh, that's an important cost benefit weighing of these kinds of things. So again, no need to respond to any of that, just, uh, food for thought in the equations going forward.
Couldn't agree more, council member Beloga, especially about the, in academia, I think they would call it a, uh, a, a literature scan or a, a, a review, an academic review, something like that, making sure that, yes, we have all the information from cities that have been doing this for a while. And I know Minneapolis and St. Paul are somewhat recent, but other cities have, they, they do have a track record that would be worth following. So, Mr. Verbrogie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Council member Beloga, I realize you said you didn't need a response, but I think there are two things in there that are, that are good to, um, uh, share for discussion. The first is you're right. I think that, um, an understanding of the lay of the land after implementation is important. So that, I would include that as part of the data on the front end, uh, one of the first couple of conversations that we have. And your question about the, uh, staffing assumption is a critical piece as well. And if you, if you, uh, would look at the information in the packet, you'll see that we have that as one of the last conversations. And the reason that we have it at the end is that, uh, we think it's important to have a conversation around what the enforcement philosophy is going to be, uh, which will help us determine, uh, how many staff may be needed to, um, to audit or to, uh, respond or investigate, whatever those various functions are. And, uh, you know, one of the things that we will, uh, have to learn through the course of the process here is, you know, what the anticipated, um, incident case is likely going to be. And so learning from Minneapolis, St. Paul and Duluth will be helpful. Uh, as, as Chris indicated earlier, you know, Minneapolis has a staff of four, uh, three of them are, uh, J Ds. And Duluth has a staff of one. Obviously they have a very different, uh, economic and employment base. So trying to figure out, uh, where we fit in there and how we can, uh, project or calibrate a, a staffing and resource demand will be an important part of this conversation.
Council member Loman.
You know, Mayor, your, your question, I think, is a good one. Um, uh, one of the, one of our priorities that we talk about as, as a council is having high, uh, quality, uh, services, um, uh, for our, our residents. So when I, I, I think of your question that you asked in terms of, if we've got a lot of these priorities that are out there that we're looking at trying to do, you know, this included, you know, how, what level of quality are we going to deliver to our residents, uh, in the community as we work on each of these projects? Uh, I, I do think it's possible to, to do it. And I do think it's possible to have us, you know, heads down, working hard, you know, meeting every single Monday, uh, throughout, uh, the rest of this, this year, next year, uh, into the future, uh, in, in a way that, you know, could really burn us out as policymakers. Uh, and so I, I, I'm nervous about that, meetings that go past 10 o'clock and, and really late, trying to, you know, trying to really drive these things, uh, in there. Um, the alternative approach that I have heard from the manager is, and the, I think staff is putting forward, is this empowerment, uh, piece uh, of empowering folks to move some of these, uh, pieces forward so that when we come, we could come back and look at this stuff later on. Now that doesn't take the burden off of staff in terms of trying to deliver all these priorities. And there's going to be a limit to that. But I, I certainly have a concern. I don't, I have no doubt that we could get all three of these things done or, or the big long list that, uh, you know, it's been sent to us. Uh, but I, 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 I wonder about the quality, uh, the quality of their product. And when I say that, I think about that affordable housing, uh, proposal that we brought forward and how that was the envy of, of our community and really of the country, the work that we did there. As we work on each of these initiatives, how do we want to be seen and what's the quality of that work that we want to put out there? And so, you know, Mayor, I, I wonder about that, you know? I think it's a good question. It's something that I, I, I'm concerned about. Um, so, um, I don't know if that answers your question, but, um, I'm certainly concerned.
You know, thank you, Council member Loman, and I wasn't looking for answers. I just, I wanted to bring that up and make sure that, yes, we, we do talk about that and we do keep that front of mind, that, uh, you're exactly right. I, uh, we're, we're proud of our opportunity housing ordinance and we well should be. And I think, um, ideally at the end of this process, we have three different processes that we're absolutely as proud of. And much like our opportunity housing ordinance is, we've got other cities copying them because they think it's, that Bloomington has done, once again, does, done such a great job. So that's the goal, absolutely. Let's go with, uh, council member Carter and then, uh, if we could, counsel, if there's, if we, if we can get moving on because we've got a couple more things on the agenda this evening yet and want to make sure we get there before the hour gets too late. But, uh, council member Carter.
Um, thank you, Mayor. So I guess I have a question for the city manager. When you look at that spectrum of engagement, would you say that there is, um, is it more intense in term of, in terms of staff time and resources as you go further down the spectrum? Because in my mind, I was thinking we'd be right in the middle, kind of in the inform, understanding we've got a lot on our plate, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. I mean, there's a lot of things going on, but also feeling pretty strongly that this is important. This is important work to do and conversations to be had. And so, um, trying to balance kind of the staff time and capacity and the things that we're working on with the need to do this because it's the right thing to do, um, and doing it in a way that engages our community members and our business community. So I'm, I'd just be curious, like, do you see it increasing intensity as you go along that spectrum?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Carter, that's, that's a really good question. I would say that the, my, my inclination is to believe that the, um, number of staff and the extent of their involvement is going to increase the more that you move to the right side of the spectrum. The closer that you get to empower is going to, I think, uh, require, um, some really committed work by a greater number of people. Um, I think the input, um, approach, uh, is, is probably going to be less intensive just because we will, um, spend less time in, um, in, in actual, uh, conversation and deliberative process, working, uh, collaboratively with people. Um, and the more, the more that we lean to the right side, the more time we're going to spend in that working mode. And that just is going to take, uh, more hours by more people.
Okay, that is helpful. Um, I guess I would, I would stick with my original, um, preference of being in kind of the middle of that spectrum, um, considering the intensity as we go along it. And, and part of the reason is because, I mean, we do have three cities in Minnesota that have passed ordinances that are actually pretty similar across the cities. And there are some differences, but we have models to go off of. Um, and when I think about the work that Dr. Johnson did in the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and the 90-day tenant protection ordinance, I mean, I felt like that was like, we were doing something different. It was like, you know, I just felt like it was kind of like a, a whole different type of issue that we were dealing with. But I think with paid sick and safe time or earned sick and safe time, um, we have some good models and we have some data from those specific types of policies that we can be looking at. If we passed a whole different kind of policy, we couldn't even necessarily, I would assume that comparing data wouldn't be apples to apples either. So, um, I don't know, those are, that's kind of my thoughts right now.
Thank you, council member. Counsel, any additional comments, questions on this? Council member Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have, uh, one follow-up. We've talked a lot about the role of, uh, the community and various groups and all that. And, um, just want to follow up on what the city manager just said in terms of the involvement of staff. And I think one of the things that was really successful with the opportunity housing ordinance is there was a point person on staff, there was someone who had responsibility. And I think for any major type of project, that's absolutely critical, is that somebody owns the project and, you know, is able to shepherd it through to completion. And, you know, I don't need a name of anybody, but, um, just, you know, any feedback in terms of what the city manager is thinking in terms of staffing to make sure that this, uh, gets done, gets done professionally. Some else made the comment of, you know, I, I want to make sure that we're doing, I think it was council member Loman, make sure that we're, we're looked upon as having done a really high-quality job on this. Um, I also think it's important that we do have models and, and it's absolutely critical to look at. But maybe something comes out of this process that's different and unique. And, uh, because Bloomington does things differently and, and frankly, in a lot of ways better than, than places. And so let's, you know, make sure we look at that, that staff person and who the right person to really, uh, drive this is. I don't know if that was a question or a lengthy comment, so, sorry.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and council member Nelson, council members. When we bring back the project scoping, there will be a clearly defined project lead on this, uh, similar to, uh, how the C back, uh, Kari Carlson, our budget manager, and I were the co, um, co-owners of the project. Uh, we'll have somebody designated in that role for this as well.
Very good. Counsel, last call. Anything else? I don't see any hands up. So thanks for the, uh, conversation. I think this is, uh, an interesting start to this and look forward to our next update as we scope this out and figure out where we're going to be going and look forward to hearing of that in March. Thank you much. Let's move to item 8.2 on our agenda, which is the Sustainability Commission 2021 Work Plan. We've got, uh, Emma Strass, who's our sustainability coordinator and Mr. Tim Sandry, who's the chair of our Sustainability Commission, joining us this evening to walk us through the plans for the Sustainability Commission. Good evening to both Ms. Strass, Mr. Sandry. Welcome. Thanks for being here with, with us tonight.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, as, uh, Mayor Busby mentioned, uh, I'm joined by our sustainability coordinator, Emma Strauss, and, uh, we are here to provide a, a quick update, uh, um, and summary of our 2020 accomplishments and provide a brief overview of the commission's proposed 2021 work plan. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, as a reminder, the Sustainability Commission is made up of 11 members, including eight adult commissioners, two young adult commissioners and one council member liaison, all of whom bring a great deal of enthusiasm as well as a wealth of sustainability expertise. Uh, next slide, please. In terms of, uh, 2020 accomplishments, uh, in the packet, there is a list of, uh, completed 2020 initiatives as well as a list of initiatives that are still in progress. All told, we have made, uh, great strides in, uh, 2020. And, uh, and the following are, uh, some of the accomplishments that we are most, uh, proud of. As you can see on the screen there, uh, we achieved, uh, the city Bloomington achieved Green Step Cities Level Four. Uh, there are, are about 150 communities enrolled in the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program. And in 2020, Bloomington became one of 29 cities to achieve step four. We achieved step four by taking specific, uh, sustainability actions and by implementing city and municipal sustainability performance metrics. To achieve step five, which is the highest level, uh, city must demonstrate improvement in five of the performance metrics, um, adopted in step four. So in 2021, we'll be working towards joining the other 19 cities that have achieved Green Steps Cities Level Five. Uh, next slide, or no, sorry. Um, um, Earth Day, uh, Celebration, uh, 2020 was the 50th anniversary of the annual, uh, uh, Earth Day event. Uh, as we have done the last couple of years, we co-hosted an Earth Day Celebration with the Bloomington chapter of the League of Women Boaters. However, uh, COVID, because of COVID, we were forced to hold an online event and not until, oh, uh, uh, when the, uh, April. However, more than 40 Bloomington residents, uh, showed up, uh, for the event and each participant committed to a specific, uh, sustainability action. Uh, Parker's Picnic Round, uh, as part of ecological land stewardship focus, we continued the implementation of the grant-funded Parker's Picnic Round Restoration, uh, Project. Uh, in energy, uh, in order to address the city's largest source of greenhouse gas emissions, we have begun to undertake the policy strategies that are outlined in Bloomington's Energy Action Plan. Uh, and those, um, uh, those, uh, policy items, uh, are the next item on our, on your agenda tonight. Um, and finally, solid waste, uh, despite the challenges of COVID, we were able to continue, uh, organics, uh, recycling, education outreach, and continue to see an increase in the amount of organics being dropped off. Next slide, please. So that's, that was a summary of last, uh, year. So what about this year? Uh, the, the ordinance that established the, uh, commission mentions five areas of focus, including air, water, energy, land and ecological resources and waste. As the commission has matured, we have further refined these areas, uh, refined these into the areas of carbon slash, um, uh, climate change, surface and groundwater, uh, solid waste and ecological land stewardship. And this year, we will also be including, including environmental justice, uh, as well as transportation, as it is the largest emitter of greenhouse gases. So as, as our understanding of our overall mission continues to mature, it may make sense to adjust the governing ordinance to, to, that there's, it happens. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, 2021 work plan, most excited, what are we most excited about? So all of the, uh, items in our work plan are important, but there are some that really, we really get excited about. So for 2021, we're really excited about the following. Uh, a partnership with the Parks Group that would include creating a natural resources chapter for the upcoming 10-year Parks, uh, Systems Master Plan. And in addition to that, creating an overall natural resources master plan. And thirdly, initiating at least one more natural resource restoration project in addition to, you know, the Parker's Picnic Round, uh, project.
Say, Tim, excuse me, Tim, can I interrupt for just a second, Tim?
Yes.
Uh, you're kind of cutting in and out, you're breaking it up. Perhaps if you turned off your camera while you're, while you're presenting, I think we might have a little more bandwidth to, to get your presentation because you're cutting in and out on us a little bit.
All right. Hopefully, hopefully this will be a little better. Um, so, um, we are also, um, so I lost my place here for a second. Let me, uh, okay. Uh, um, we're also excited about implementing two energy disclosure ordinance, ordinances, which, uh, Sustainability Coordinator Strass and technical, and technical advisors from the Center for Energy and Environment will, uh, will discuss in more detail in a moment. Uh, also excited about ensuring that environmental justice is a critical component of all the commission's work and recommending specific next steps for en- environmental justice, justice efforts within Bloomington. Uh, and also creating plans for a sustainable alternative for curbside, for the curbside cleanup program and a rollout of, uh, residential curbside organics pickup, both of which we hope to see implemented in 2022. And finally, continuing the irrigation, water, uh, conservation program focusing primarily on town home associations. Uh, so the next slide is questions. Before getting to questions, I would be remiss if I did not call out the support and work of Deputy Director Biellas and especially Coordinator Strass. Perhaps the greatest compliment that a commissioner can bestow on staff is you made us look good. Uh, as a commission, um, as, uh, uh, as a commission, we can speak to our 2020 accomplishments and what we plan to accomplish this year. However, I think we all know that past and future, uh, accomplishments are primarily due to the hard work and guidance. However, I think we all know that past and future accomplishments are primarily due to the hard work and guidance from the staff. So on behalf of the Sustainability Commission, I want to thank Bloomington staff and especially Deputy Director Biellas and Coordinator Strass for the support, guidance and hard work and especially for making us look good. And with that, Coordinator Strass and I are happy to answer questions and concerns about our 2020 accomplishments as well as the proposed 2021 plan.
Thank you, Chair Sandry and Ms. Strass, thanks for your work as well. Yes, you, you have made them look good and it's an outstanding group and to make them look better is, it's a big lift and you've done just that. So thank you so very much for that. Well done. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions? Chris, I don't know that I can see the entire screen here. Ah, Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tim, as always, great presentation. Appreciate all the work that you and your committee and staff are doing on this. Just a quick item in your written work plan, there's an item, Sustainable Building and Site Design Ordinance Research. And it says, and which I think we're going to talk about a little bit more later, but it says for future building development. And the only thing that, that I wanted to ask and or question is the, the reality that most of the energy is used by our existing built environment and what are we doing there to improve the performance of homes? I know we have some audits, I know you have some other ideas that we're going to talk about later today. I just think when we look at the ability to get our arms around this issue, we have to address the existing usage of, of homes, businesses, cars, things of that nature, not just future development. So that's, I don't know if it's a question, it's more of a comment. I guess that's a pattern for me tonight, my apologies.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. I think the, the bulk of our effort will be focused on existing, existing homes and businesses. We're, you know, going to talk about some policy things in just a moment to, to kind of emphasize that. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we can do better on the new building construction to increase that efficiency a bit more than what is allowed by the state building codes. And so we would like to see if there's ways of doing that so that 10 years from now, we're not going back to those businesses, those commercial buildings, those houses to say, yeah, can you do this now? So I, I think that would, as much as we can, we'd like to encourage businesses and residents as businesses and homes are built, to go above and beyond the, the codes to, to do more to make sure that the buildings are as energy efficient as, as possible.
Well, well, thank you for that because I mean, I think we all know that the least expensive time to do those things is when the building is built. Retrofitting is more expensive. You know, obviously the, there's more houses already there, buildings already there than we'll build in a year. But I appreciate that approach to it. Just a quick follow-up question is, in terms of building code, what latitude flexibility and ability do we have on those things? I know a lot of the building code is state mandated and there's some, there's some prohibitions on exceeding that code and kind of what, what are you guys seeing and what is in the works in terms of those issues?
You're absolutely right. We cannot establish, a city cannot establish building codes that are more stringent than those, than the state codes. And so what a number of cities are doing, including the cities like St. Paul and, and other cities is, and I'm going to ask Coordinator Strass to talk a little bit about this because she's looking at this in detail. But what other cities are doing is finding ways to create incentives for builders to go above and beyond the state codes. And there's a number of ways of going about that and I think I'll just ask Coordinator Strass to talk a little bit about that because I know that she's been doing some research on this, so, so perhaps, I mean, you can, you can talk a bit more about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandy. So, so Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, what we've been looking into, the St. Paul model, as Commissioner Sandry mentioned, is looking at using city financing as a mechanism for intensifying those improvements. So the city of St. Paul, if you're using funds from the HRA or the city, they require you, using a sustainable building model like B3 and SB 2030 or LEED. So it's up to the discretion of the developer of which sustainable building model that they choose. But there are some requirements that they're able to set forth in that ordinance if there's over $200,000 worth of funding used on a project. So that's primarily what we're seeing, but this is something that multiple cities are looking into. So with the, with the work plan this year is working with those cities to make sure that there's a regional understanding and consistency as we're looking into options for each of our cities.
And then my last question I have is just on, on funding, because you know, this Commission works very hard, a lot of volunteers, it's, it's great. And it is ambitious and it has a very large work plan. And I know one of the questions that I get a lot is just in terms of funding. Is there, and what is being done in terms of trying to find grant funding or other resources that can help with this? I mean, you just talked about financing for projects to increase the sustainability. Would that be an increase in our existing programs or would there be other sources of funding that we might be able to use to be able to help get those projects done, those types of things? Or whether it be natural resource cleanup or, you know, whatever the issue is that you're tackling. It takes tremendous resources to do these things and how are we trying to address that?
Yes, so Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, we're always looking for grant funding. So later tonight, you'll hear from Katie Jones and Isaac Smith from CE and that's an example of Hennepin County using their funding that we've had free technical assistance to bring forward an item that was in the Energy Action Plan as well as having advisory services from CE and looking for grants from the county, from the state to move this work forward. So it looks like potentially there's a cohort that we can be using grant funding for, but that's in the works. But definitely looking for opportunities for, especially grant funding for the planning processes of these initiatives.
And I would, I would also add to that, that, that there's other areas that we look for grant money as well. So for example, restoration projects, the Parker's Picnic Ground was prime, is the restoration is being primarily funded by an outside grant with a bit of matching money from, from the city. So we're always looking, you know, to do this work, it's going to take money. And so we're always looking for opportunities to leverage available grant money to move us along as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin, question?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I'll echo the other council members and say thank you, the Commission for, for your work here, for the staff that's supporting it. It's Sustainability Commission definitely sets a gold standard for aggressive action from our boards and commissions and that's appreciated. I, I just, I'm wondering here, so I see reviewing the Sustainability Chapter in the Parks Master Plan as a priority here. But obviously the, the master plan kind of sets the 10,000-foot view and then there's a lot of more specific planning in each of the elements around town over coming years. Is it anticipated that things like the Sustainable Building and Site Standards and Sustainable Landscaping Standards are going to provide some pretty firm guidance for those more minute projects that we're going to have pop up over, all over town underneath the master plan? Or is Sustainability Commission kind of picturing a consultative role as those projects come up moving forward? Obviously in the plan, we have new types of facilities and new types of parks and new types, which is all going to need a lot of examination.
Councilmember Martin, Mayor, we will. The plan, the, the assumption is, is that we will, that the city will establish a building code, whether it be something like B3 or, or something along those lines, that will guide construction and, and as renovations are done for city facilities. And so I, so that I think will, you know, help drive some of that on the city side. And in addition, as we're doing restoration projects, you know, we'll also have guidelines that we will be following, that will develop and follow, that will help us as we are looking at projects and those guidelines may be helpful for other purposes as well within the community.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Comments on the work plan of the Sustainability Commission? Councilmember Lowman?
I couldn't let the moment pass without thanking our Chair for all the work that he does really in tandem with the, the staff to kind of really drive this process forward. Thanks for your work that, that you do with us. And certainly I know that you work with the Mayor on, on occasion and many other council members and other staff as we kind of move these priorities for the city forward. And so again, thanks for your leadership, since that hadn't been necessarily specifically mentioned. And I know that you had some hardship over this past couple of months here. And so I'm happy to hear that, happy to see that, that you're kind of coming out of a storm and you continue to even still be dedicated to your, your personal passion around this particular issue. And I, that's very much appreciated from one, one Commissioner, one council member to, to you, Mr. Sandry.
Thank you. Thank you for those kind words. It's, it's much appreciated.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I also just wanted to echo Councilmember Lowman's sentiments and say thank you so much, Commissioner Sandry, for everything that you've done over many years for Bloomington and for sustainability efforts. And a huge thank you to everybody that serves on the Commission and to city staff who, who obviously, you know, live and breathe this work. And so, thank you, thank you. I also just want to say, you know, reviewing the work plan and seeing some of the new additions, I really appreciate the fact that it's really clear that you've been, you know, paying attention to what the council is saying, paying attention to what residents are saying. You can see different, different things incorporated throughout the plan and I really appreciate it, like natural resources and also the changing of the purpose to include environmental justice and, and just be more explicit about climate change. So thank you so much and, and I just really appreciate all the work that everyone involved is doing.
Thank you, thank you. I'll pass that along to the other Commission members as well.
Counsel, we've heard the presentation and right now I'd look for a motion to adopt the Sustainability Commission's 2021 Work Plan.
So move? Second?
I can't.
We got a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Lowman to adopt the 2020 Work Plan of the Sustainability Commission. Here, no further discussion of the council? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Yes, if you could, Chair Sandry, pass on our, our thanks to the entire Sustainability Commission. They do outstanding work. I think, Councilmember Martin said it best, is they're the gold standard. They, you guys do outstanding work. We really do appreciate it. Thank you so very much for your work and for your dedication as Chair over the past so many years. Your leadership has been invaluable. Thanks much.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Counsel, for all the support that you've given us over the last years to make this Commission possible and providing us the resources that we need to really make a difference.
Very good. Thank you much. Kind of brings us to item eight point three, which is somewhat related here, which is, it's an energy, a discussion of an energy disclosure ordinances for two items, both one, a time of sale energy disclosure and a second piece would be a large business benchmarking. And Ms. Strass is going to stay with us this evening to talk us through this. Thank you much and please, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So tonight I'll provide some background about those two energy disclosure items. Then I will pass it off to Isaac Smith from the Center for Energy and Environment, who's our technical advisor on time of sale. He's also worked with the city of Minneapolis as their technical advisor on a policy that is similar to this. And then we also are joined by Katie Jones from the Center for Energy and Environment, who has been our technical advisor on large building benchmarking and her time has been provided by Hennepin County's Efficient Buildings Collaborative. So background, you've heard me say it before, but we have a community goal of a 75% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2035. And we are going to reach that by a 95% reduction in electricity and a 33% reduction in natural gas. And we're doing this because energy is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the city. We're not on track to meet these goals. If you look at how we're currently performing, a different visual than you've maybe seen before, but if this is our annual average natural gas savings as we're seeing on the screen. It jumped. We need a 2.5 times increase to meet our goal. So we need to make a significant jump in our average annual savings. And on the electricity side, if we're seeing our current savings that we're seeing on average each year, we need a five times increase to meet the savings and meet our target of that 75% reduction. So lots more to do. Bloomington, along with other cities, are unfortunately not on track with their greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. And you may have been tracking that on a state level. The past few weeks, a lot of articles have come out talking about how our state is falling further and further away from our greenhouse gas emission reduction goal. And the Climate Change Subcommittee had their report come out a few weeks ago showing that our goal of 2025 of a 30% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, we are at 8% instead of 30. And we already missed our target goal of a 15% reduction back in 2015. So there's work to be done. And here's a graph just showing that of our current progression in greenhouse gas emissions of where we're at and where the Next Generation Energy Act projected goals are and that gap. So the Energy Action Plan that was adopted in 2018 has two ordinances that we'll be talking about tonight. We have Strategy F for, on the business side, looking at a benchmarking ordinance and participating in Hennepin County's Efficient Building Collaborative. And then on the after 2020 Strategies for Residential, to look at energy audit disclosure as a part of a real estate transaction. And with that, I'll pass it over to Isaac Smith.
Thank you, Coordinator Strass. So I'm going to give an overview of energy disclosure and then jump into the how it works side of things on time of sale and then pass it off to my colleague Katie Jones to talk about our building benchmarking. So I always like to get started with just kind of grounding people and what is disclosure? It's kind of an abstract term, but it's around us and it helps us be informed and make informed buying decisions. So really what disclosure is about is about providing information that may not be readily apparent to a consumer so they can take that information and make that buying decision. Really saw this first with nutrition facts. So you're in a grocery store, you're looking at two boxes of cereal, you can't really tell what's inside those by looking at them, but the nutrition fact- the nutrition facts label gives that information to the consumer so they can make that buying decision with that information. Um actually, we really saw with the fuel economy standards. So looking at a car, it's hard to understand the miles per gallon, but this label was created. This information helped inform buyers and has since increased the fuel economy of um the vehicles that we purchase. And most recently, we see these little energy guides, stickers on all the appliances that we buy. So when we're looking at refrigerators, microwaves, other things, we can um look at the energy use or estimated energy use for those appliances and compare them when making a buying decision. So no review of the two policies we're going to talk about today. Um one is time of sale, energy disclosure, and the other is energy benchmarking. We're really just comparing the building types, the mechanism and the impact. Uh so the building types of the time of sales focused on single family, one to three unit homes with benchmarking. We're focused on the large commercial multifamily buildings. The mechanism for time of sale disclosure is prior to the home being listed for sale. That would have the energy disclosure go in place. And then with benchmarking, it's an annual energy benchmarking of the performance of that building. On the impact side for time of sales, around fifteen hundred homes per year. So that's the average number of homes sold in Bloomington. And with energy benchmarking, it's around a hundred and fifty to three hundred buildings that would be benchmarked each year. So diving into the time of sale, energy disclosure policy. Um currently, there is a time of sale inspection in Bloomington. So prior to listing your home for sale, you have to have this inspection completed. It's largely focused on the health and safety aspects of the home, but it does look at a few energy features. And this evaluation report had to be left out at open houses and at the closing of the home. So we're looking at leveraging this uh time of sale inspection and adding energy disclosure to that. Um so how that would work on the next slide is you'd be collecting additional energy data during that time of sale inspection. That data would then be used to generate an energy disclosure report. And then we just follow those same uh disclosure guidelines of leaving it at open houses, reviewing it at the closing of the home. Um by adding energy disclosure to the time of sale inspection, really uh it's an opportunity for for leveraging the existing city processes and staff. So that allows for low cost implementation for the city and for home sellers. We're not requiring a separate energy inspection. We're using something that's already in place, which can hopefully streamline this and save costs. So diving a little deeper into the energy data collection, we're really focused on the four areas of existing homes that you can um garner the most cost effective energy savings. So that's attic insulation, heating system, windows and wall insulation. And as you can see in that first column, we're already collecting some data during Bloomington's time of sale inspection. Um but we'd be adding these additional inputs. So there's eight inputs there, seven or eight inputs with attic insulation, be the insulation type and inches. The heating system, we'd be looking at the venting type and the age. For windows, we'd just be looking at if there's single pane windows present or if they have a storm or not. And for wall insulation, we'd be drilling a single hole in the exterior wall. Typically, this is done in a closet to evaluate if it has insulation or not. And that would be done for homes built before nineteen eighty. So what do we do with that data? Here's an example of Minneapolis' Energy Disclosure Report. We'd be looking at adding an energy score, which is an easy way to compare the energy performance of homes and is put on a familiar zero to one scale. We'd also be highlighting the opportunities for energy savings. So we want to make recommendations. This report prioritizes the energy savings opportunities for each home. It outlines the resources available to consumers. So that's energy advisors, utility rebates, loan interest financing, and estimates the cost for making these improvements. So it gives people all the tools and information they need uh to look towards improving that house. So our goals with this policy are really to create a more informed market. We want to make energy visible. It's not visible currently during the transaction of a home. We need to create awareness about home energy performance. So as Coordinator Stress outlined, energy is a very important part of reaching our climate goals. And right now it's largely invisible. People don't think about it a lot. So we need to really elevate that and make it visible. We also need to reward homeowners that have made these energy improvements. Uh the city of Bloomington's done a lot of work. We're trying to encourage um and provide resources towards these energy upgrades. But when you go to sell that home, it's currently hidden from the market. That investment that you've made isn't visible and you don't recoup it at that time. So we want to make sure that it is visible at the transaction and we want to spur investment in energy improvement. So that's really what this policy is aimed at doing by creating that visibility, highlighting these resources available to homeowners, kind of laying that path towards energy improvement. We hope to spur investments in the building stock in Bloomington. We can do this at a much larger scale as well. So that fifteen hundred number, that's five times the number of home energy squad or energy audits that are happening in the city of Bloomington. So we're getting this energy information, home energy performance data out to a lot more households. And then the city can also use that data uh to do more planning, create additional resources to help reach these energy goals. And lastly, this table just outlines the energy savings opportunity that's out there. This is really our end goal. Uh so this is just the insulation savings of the existing building stock in Bloomington. So the homes that need insulation, if they were to uh complete those insulation upgrades, it would result in one point eight million dollars in utility bill savings per year. This also aligns the the energy savings and the carbon reduction from those insulation upgrades. And with that, I'll pass it on to Katie Jones to talk about benchmarking, and then we'll have time for questions.
Thank you much. Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um and good evening. Um I my name is Katie Jones and I'll be talking about energy benchmarking. So um as Isaac was mentioning, energy, what energy disclosure is, um this picture kind of represents what energy disclosure means for energy benchmarking. So as he was showing that when you go out and buy an appliance, you'll see these energy guide labels that give an end a full picture of the energy efficiency of that appliance. We're doing so um or something that's very similar to that with energy benchmarking for buildings. Um so rather than slapping a giant yellow sticker on this on the edge of a building, um we are um still trying to gather that full picture of the energy efficiency of that asset and getting um a high level, you know, energy efficiency metric um that will be able to fully understand that the picture of energy efficiency in the building and um be able to communicate that um to potential buyers, sellers, um leasers and occupants. Next. So how do we get that information? Well, it brings together, we're bringing together two silos of information that have never been brought together before. The first one is meter consumption information, which includes that electricity, natural gas, any district energy, as well as water consumption with building characteristics. And that includes the building area, which is the square footage, the type of building, whether it's a hotel, a school, an office, um the schedules of the building, when is it occupied, the age of the building, uh among uh many other building characteristics. And when you bring those uh two silos together, you get three high level energy efficiency metrics. The first one is energy use intensity, otherwise known as EUI, and it's measured in KBTS per square foot per year. Um so that's the kind of raw number um normalized over the area of the building. That's useful for comparing a building's energy usage over time, as well as comparing um similar buildings to one another. So say, comparing one school of uh of a certain size to another school of a different size. You're able to use the EUI to do that. The Energy Star score is the second metric, and it does one better than the energy use intensity. Um it measures the energy uh performance on a one to one hundred scale, one being inefficient, one hundred being efficient, and fifty being the national median. Um and it normalizes for um many others of those building characteristics that I mentioned. So it allows us to compare, say, a hotel to a school to an office building. Um for buildings that score seventy five or greater, they're deemed high uh high efficiency. And so um they are eligible for Energy Star rating or certification. And with that certification, they can get a plaque that goes in their front door, the front lobby to indicate that they are indeed a high performing building. And last but not least, the third metric is greenhouse gas emissions. So um from the energy use usage, we can understand the greenhouse gas emissions that are associated with that energy creation and use, um which is of course very um informative um for tracking um with the citywide greenhouse gas emissions and to help uh target resources and attention um to addressing those um emissions that are coming from buildings. So what buildings are included in benchmarking? Um typically, it's the largest um uh buildings in the city. Um so we're talking about large private commercial buildings, large private multifamily buildings, and large public buildings. We're not um talking about industrial buildings when it comes to energy benchmarking, and that is because uh industrial buildings' energy use is typically um uh uh stems from um the 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 processes that are going on inside that building. Um so it's a manufacturing process or something of the like, and that um i- is usually what's really driving that energy consumption. Energy benchmarking is really trying to measure the um the efficiency of that building asset and um and so it is more appropriate for um those large public um and private uh commercial buildings and um then multifamily buildings. To benchmark a building, um we use uh this program and it's online. It's called Energy Star Portfolio Manager. It's a free um federal uh federally supplied program um by the DOE and EPA jointly. And um what's great about it is that, so one, that it's free and two, that it provides um a a third party reporting mechanism so that um it allows for cities to gather um those high level metrics um uh from a a participating building. So to to benchmark the building, um it takes uh, you know, bringing together those uh data from those two silos that I mentioned and entering that into the system. And it typically takes between four and ten hours for the initial that initial setup. Um it that varies based on the the level of organization that that building owner or manager has of that data. Um and what's lucky in Bloomington is that um the two main utilities, Excel Energy and Centerpoint Energy, actually have automatic data transfer tools. And so once those are set up, um the data, um the the energy consumption data just moves um on a monthly basis into this the portfolio manager system. And because of that, it makes um the subsequent benchmarking years um pretty seamless, um such that it, you know, the data flows in there and that really the only updates that are needed are any um with regards to any um uh building characteristics that have changed and then the reporting that that comes with that. The second main piece of of a benchmarking policy is transparency. So as I mentioned, um the the way that buildings comply is is by um reporting their high level metrics to the city. And so then and then after that that happens, then the city discloses that data publicly either in a map or a summary report. Um here is an example um from the Hennepin County's Efficient Buildings Collaborative that shows uh the 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 buildings that are are being benchmarked. Um and what's valuable about this is that for a building owner or manager um who's looking to buy um a a new building or um a a business that is looking to lease into a new building. Um these these maps provide a really easy and seamless way to understand the efficiency of those buildings so that we can drive um more bu- more um interest in um in buildings that are highly efficient. So it's kind of a a race to the top um for um more efficient buildings. And that just allows for um for people to make better decisions on the buildings that they choose to um to engage with. So energy benchmarking is a um a a very common policy um throughout the United States at this point. So more than thirty jurisdictions um have it, and it ranges from small cities, medium cities to large cities that have um adopted it. Um and it's mostly because it it makes a lot of sense that it's um it's common sense to have um information available um to to building owners or uh potential building owners um when they're making decisions about um these investments. Um yeah. With that. So uh some of the benefits, and I kind of already hit on these a little bit, but the first one is that it'll it helps building owners understand um their building performance and prioritize that improvements, particularly for building owners that have, you know, a portfolio of buildings. They're able to just take a look at that Energy Star score and see which one's the lowest and um, you know, prioritize their their efforts there. Um eh the second major benefit is that it facilitates building peer comparison. So you know, with that map, it's easy to understand who are um who are the peers by sorting by by building type um and getting an understanding of of which buildings um are are performing um better or worse and um, you know, learn having the opportunity to learn from peer buildings. Third, it creates demand for energy efficiency in the property market. Um by just having that information available, it it causes more people to want um that more uh efficient buildings because of the lower cost of operating them. Fourth, it equips the city to be a better resource to building owners. So if um the city wants to provide um uh resources or um grant funding or other things like that, um it having uh an understanding of which uh buildings had the greatest opportunity for savings um gives the city uh, you know, eh makes the city better equipped um to help them out. And last but not least, it helps um the the city meet Minnesota Green Step City Best Practice Action two point three. And I know, so I heard earlier that um the city's at uh step four, so this could um help set that set you all over the edge to that step five. So as mentioning that um energy benchmarking helps drive energy savings, and here's some of the the data um to show that. So from a twenty twelve study from Energy Star um at from a number of buildings that were per per um were being studied. Um you can see that there was a seven percent reduction in um energy use uh over a four year period. And for um a snapshot of cities that have benchmarking policies, I try to take um examples from across the country. You can see that generally there is an annual energy savings portfolio wide um from of about one to three percent each year. So um this program, uh so the energy Hennepin County is is putting on this Efficient Buildings Collaborative, which um Bloomington is taking part in. And the benefit of this co- collaborative is that it is a standardized process of shared resources and tools for implementation to make it more economically feasible for um small and midsize cities to uh adopt um benchmarking policies. Um it it generally, I it it takes a um at least one full time staff member um to implement a benchmarking policy if if the city is doing this as a standalone um uh city. Um but through this collaborative, um there is a much uh result reduction in the need um from staff because of this this shared um shared process. And the other um benefit of it is it's creating uniformity across cities um throughout the county and actually throughout the state. Um eh that allow um that it makes it easier for building owners to um to comply and for them to get training um and and basically share the the same resources across city boundaries.
Thank you, Katie. With that, we're looking at next step. So tonight we're here looking for initial feedback on these two policies. And then the next plan is to wo- move forward with community engagement, hearing both from our business community and residents and and realtors and um inspectors in the city. We also are working to finalize our ratio equity impact assessments for both of these initiatives and to draft a policy language and then plan to come back um to uh council for you to consider uh the energy disclosure policies for adoption and also the adoption and approval of staff time moving this forward. And then in Q three, um if we're moving forward, then um coming back for another council uh meeting for you to consider um energy disclosure ordinances for adoption. So uh that's legal language. And then also having staff beginning program implementation preparations from Q three to Q four with a plan to launch both of these if they do uh pass uh the beginning January first of twenty twenty two. And with that, we'll open it up to questions. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all for the presentation. Good information, uh interesting concepts, interesting ideas. Council questions on this? Comments? As they said, they're looking for feedback and we've got a uh we'll be coming back to this again uh later in the year, but uh this is the initial uh opportunity to provide some feedback or or some ideas on this. Couple of things that I wanted to throw out, I especially with the benchmarking benefits, the energy savings, the the one to two percent each year, it may, you know, it may look like only one to two percent each year, but boy, it it obviously adds up. It definitely adds up, and it's definitely a worthwhile kind of thing to take a look at. And I'm especially encouraged with the benchmarking, um the benchmarking work, the fact that the tools through Hennepin County make it uh make it very efficient and and allow for that that city to city comparison and um actually allow for uh minimal staff time to be worked on, to be working on this because it is it is through um a standardized process through Hennepin County. So I think it's a it's definitely a good thing to think about. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um just uh first by way of a comment, I and this is a question that I I uh raised previously, but just to sort of clarify um that this would not be, neither of these proposals would be mandates that that um because in this particular instance, uh state building code takes uh precedent that we would not be mandating anything new on on businesses or buildings or anything. that we would not be mandating anything new on businesses or buildings or anything like that. But the question I had, just sort of generally moving forward, one thing I always like to think about, you know, when we think about policy decisions like this, is sort of even beyond the sort of the initial purpose and the initial scope, you know, how can we think about this and how can we use this to further our goals? And so I kind of sprung this on you, so I'll forgive you if you don't have an answer right away, but I'm curious if there's been any discussion on how policies like this have been used, not obviously in terms of mandates, but to sort of incentivize, you know, moving beyond requirements and goals and all of that. I mean, it seems to me that a lot of the purpose here is information, is data. And so I'm just curious if any of you know anything about how that data has been used to sort of move beyond just these initial requirements to sort of incentivize things.
Councilmember Coulter, I can start with that. So with your first question about mandates, so again, this wouldn't require energy efficiency actions to take place if you score lower. It would just require the disclosure of that information. And for furthering goals, so information is power. So I know one example, my sister just moved to Minneapolis and she got a postcard in the mail saying her home energy score because they had time-of-sale disclosure. And that information then caused her to call Home Energy Squad and schedule and audit and learn more and start scheduling that work. And I think she did it not just because her sister is in this line of work, but she had that information in front of her. So on the residential side, I think it's really powerful to have that opportunity to have some face time with people, especially who are moving into a home and thinking about projects that they can do. And then on the larger commercial side of things, we've been working with Excel's Energy's Partners in Energy Program, the utilities, there's tons of rebates out there. And I think having those opportunities to say specifically, this is how you're scoring, it might incentivize, you know, we've seen that it does incentivize people to take action and being able to have those touchpoints to say, okay, your score is a little lower. And I think Katie, maybe you could share your example of what one of the cities is doing with the grant program, but definitely using this as a launching point to have communication and then connect with resources to get work done.
Yeah, yeah, I think as you were saying, Emma, that city had knowledge is power. And I mean, we see that more and more companies are wanting to be in spaces that are sustainable, that are more efficient. And so it's almost seen, you know, with buildings that are efficient, it's seen as a kind of, you know, an amenity, similar to if you have a gym or if you have no other spaces that are desirable. And so it's pushing the market in the way that the city is wanting to see it move. So that's one thing. And then another thing is that the city can help, you know, move that along as well. So there is a city in Minnesota that has a grant program that focuses more so dollars towards those buildings that are scoring lower and therefore have more opportunity for savings.
Thank you. And I think that that last part was more what I was getting at is I think, you know, should this move forward, what are we doing with the information to sort of build on that and incentivize better efficiency? Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just got a few things here. Kind of picking up on where Councilmember Coulter was with regards to, you know, this isn't a mandate for any type of specific construction, but information for people. And I'd just like to applaud the commission for taking that approach of doing a performance-based system instead of a prescriptive-based system. I personally have seen it work very effectively, helped create the Minnesota Green Path Program and see new home construction where they put that rate on there and people are marketing that, that their homes are efficient and the market is responding to the mayor's point. You know, 2% per year doesn't seem like a lot until you go out a few years. And, you know, the reality is, is these are major undertakings for improvements, replacing your windows, insulating your attic, and only so many people are going to do that every year. And so if you're seeing that type of benefit, you know, community-wide in a few years, we're going to be making some real progress on there. So I appreciate that. Just a couple of questions particularly related to the the time-of-sale program. It seems very focused on the heating and air conditioning and, you know, the insulation, the building envelope and all that. Was there consideration of looking at the kind of the other half of the energy use in terms of lighting, appliances, electronics, all of those types of items within the building?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Nelson. Yes, we have looked and thought about those things. I think from the energy disclosure standpoint, those are items that are much more visible and readily apparent and have market-based strategies as far as Energy Star appliances and LED lighting and different buy downs going there. So this was really more focused on things that aren't visible, what's behind the drywall in the house and people don't understand heating systems quite as well. So we purposely kind of tried to limit the data collection to those key areas that we thought needed to be made visible the most and had the largest energy savings opportunity. Which isn't to say, obviously, lighting is a big opportunity still in residential homes as well as appliances.
And I appreciate that, that you can see a light bulb and see, and, you know, to be fair, you know, if you don't like their old incandescent bulbs, you can put LEDs in when you move in and that type of thing. You're probably much more difficult to re-insulate the building, so that makes sense. In terms of the systems, I noted that the water heater was not included, even though that's a fairly large gas appliance in most places, maybe a few electrical, but mostly gas. Was there a reason or is it difficult to account for that?
Yeah, we've talked about including water heater as part of that. That hasn't been the top priority as far as kind of the energy savings opportunity. I think I'm happy to explore that with the Sustainability Commission and outline some of those energy savings and compare those things. So kind of presented the four areas that the city of Minneapolis decided to move forward with. We're still finalizing some of those aspects. And I think we talked about with the commission with starting with kind of the areas that are happening right now with the time-of-sale market and the tissue evaluators are used to collecting and possibly even the opportunity to build out from there to additional things. So I would note there's a little less energy savings opportunity for water heaters, but there are advances in technology and other things coming down the road and there are energy savings opportunities there.
And I appreciate that. And this looks like a proposal that can definitely be expanded as we go forward into some of these other things. You know, just off the top of my head from my recollection in terms of residential construction, I think the water heating is somewhere between 5% to 10% of the energy use of a home. So it's not huge, but it's not insignificant. And there are technologies that you can look at in terms of on-demand and things like that that really impact those things. One of the things that I thought was interesting is that you have storm windows in there. And I guess, you know, how do you, when you're looking at, are you literally looking at storm windows? Or are you looking at whether or not it's multiple panes with low E argon gas or triple pane? Or is it just literally storm windows?
That is a great question, Councilmember Nelson. So with windows in the energy field, with experience going out and doing energy audits and talking to homeowners, it's the number one thing that homeowners think they need to do to improve the energy efficiency of their home. But it's also the most expensive upgrade you can make compared to some of these insulation upgrades and less visible things. So with energy audits and in the Home Energy Squad, we include windows in that score as a kind of comparison mechanism to showcase that there could be window opportunities, but, you know, wall insulation is a much larger square footage and it's a lower cost upgrade and attic insulation. So it's almost more of a comparison tool. So when looking at the cost-effective energy savings opportunities of a 10-year payback or less based on the energy savings you would get, the most cost-effective energy upgrade for windows is if you have single-pane windows and you do not have a storm. We always recommend that you put a storm on and have that be an airtight seal, essentially making a single-pane window a double-pane window. There are obviously more things you can do with windows. You can go to double-pane, triple-pane, low E. All of those, those are more expensive upgrades and people upgrade windows for other reasons as well. So really, again, just kind of leaning on that energy savings opportunity side of things.
This is not a question, it's more of a comment, but one of my biggest pet peeves are replacement windows in the existing frame. Because you change a window from an R1 to an R2, but you don't insulate around it. And, you know, all the wind is blowing through around your frame and no improvement there. And you just spent $20,000 and, you know, what'd you get for it? But that's, I don't need to comment on that. That's my own comment. The other part that I saw within this is that point, though, in terms of one of the things that really impacts energy efficiency as much as the insulation values is the air sealing, the air barriers and things like that. Is there any consideration of that portion of the building envelope?
Yeah, that's another great question, Councilmember Nelson. So with going through the Minneapolis policy and in our energy audits, a blower door test is the best measure of air leakage in an existing building. When evaluating that and talking through it internally so far with the engagement with Bloomington, the added cost of that equipment and training, making sure that you got a quality number from that test kind of outweighed the benefits of having that very specific blower door test number. What I will say is when insulation is completed and through the resources we have outlined in the report, we're encouraging homeowners to go through the CenterPoint Insulation Rebate Program, which then requires air sealing to be completed when you do attic insulation. So when they're going through and taking those steps, we want to encourage them to get that rebate, which would then require that air sealing to be completed during that upgrade process.
That is good. One of the things that I hope from this program, and first of all, I understand why you're doing the easy-to-measure data points and trying to keep the cost minimal for homeowners and definitely appreciate that. And I think it's a good approach. I think as future iterations are looked at, that blower door test, I know there's been some capacity issues and things like that as the marketplace is looking at those. I know there was a delay in getting them, but, you know, one of the maybe lower steps, and it came up in the benchmarking for the larger commercial buildings, I believe that Excel Energy has reports for homeowners now that talk to how much energy they use within that home. Is that something that we could get on the residential side to actually see where they're at, how the building is actually performing? I know I get a report every like quarter that tells me, you know, if I'm doing well compared to my neighbors or if I'm not doing well compared to my neighbors, that sort of thing. There's actually, is that something that can get incorporated into this at some point?
Yeah, those are great questions. So two things with that is kind of with the 0 to 100 rating, it's an energy asset ratings. We're very much focused on the structure of that home and the building where the energy usage or that past usage is kind of how you're using that building. So, you know, if you have more people in the home or you have lights on or how much you do the lawn, like all of these things impact your bills and don't necessarily tell the next owner how to improve that asset. So that's one side. So we're focused more on the physical properties and how they can be improved and less on the bill usage. Usage is still useful information. There are a lot of privacy concerns around that and setting up processes for disclosing, you know, a single person's energy bills that needs to be disclosed by the seller. And I'm not sure the city can require disclosure of those, that private data.
Because I do see that as actually fairly widely available within the real estate community. So where people, you know, I know a lot of buyers and it's something I'd recommend to somebody is that they ask for that past history so they can review it. So maybe there are legal restrictions, so I appreciate that. Again, I think you guys are going a really good direction. I think there's future iterations that I would encourage consideration of, one of which is to look at how to incorporate these measurements within the remodeling market. And so we got those measurements, not just of the houses that sold every year, but also the houses that are improved every year. And I think from information I got from staff today, it's about 1,500 residential remodeling permits a year, but we have 1,500 sell and 1,500 get remodeled, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood, 3,000 houses a year that we can start to get this data for. And I really, really like the market-based approach to it where we give people information. They can make their own decisions on what they want to do. They know what they're getting when they buy the house or remodel. And I certainly have seen it encourage people to do things. So I would do that, you know, if possible. I will be honest, I'm not the biggest fan of the time-of-sale inspection if there is a separate third-party inspection. And that's something I would love to talk to my colleague more about at some point of reviewing that part of it. Just because what I've seen in the green remodeling, green building space is third-party verification seems to be the standard. Right now, we're leaning on the city to do that, but there are a lot of other providers of that verification that we might be able to do, get that same data, but give, you know, it seems redundant sometimes for people to have their own inspection and the city inspections. But that's a difference. Thank you very much. This is a good proposal. My opinion, a good direction.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So hey, when I saw, first saw this several years back at a national conference, I was really excited when I talked to Chair Sandry about it. So excited to actually see that we're actually talking about this here and having the conversation among the council. So one thing that I, when I look at this disclosure piece is that, you know, certainly you have the disclosure, you got all the information that's written on the sheet. And then now you got to make these changes or you don't necessarily have to make these changes, but these things would be beneficial for the person who's going to own the house next. How do we communicate that? How do we encourage those folks who are socially, economically challenged to kind of, you know, either one, get that done earlier in the process so they can really take advantage of that, raise the price of their house? Or for those folks who are moving into that house, being able to harness other programs that we have with the city. I know you've mentioned in there, we've got low, you know, financing there. Can you talk a little bit about that? Just a little bit?
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman. So as far as the income-eligible programs, I would say right now what the city is working on, we have a Minnesota Green Corps member who is serving with us for the year and she is currently working on developing outreach materials partnering with BEEP on our energy assistance program. And once residents apply for energy assistance, they also applied or are qualified to be with the state's weatherization assistance program. So they can be getting free insulation for their home and all the larger upgrades. And so it's really an awareness issue right now of getting that information out because we know that there's so many more residents who are eligible for these programs that just aren't able to apply or know about them. So to that's step number one, everyone who's eligible to have, you know, free insulation and air sealing done, let's find a way to help folks if they want to get that work done. And then also with the HRA, they've been buying down the Home Energy Squad visits to $50 instead of 100 since, I believe, 2013. So that's a way to help people even if they aren't income-qualified with the state's requirements to have a discounted visit and that visit is completely free. Again, if residents meet the income qualifications of energy assistance as well. So starting to do more outreach and engagement around that. And with the air sealing insulation pilot that we're launching this year, doing targeted community engagement and focus groups around what does it take to get this work done? And hearing from people, you know, if they have other priorities or this isn't something, you know, I, you know, I, before I started this work, I didn't think about what was in my walls of where I was living ever. I had other things going on. So helping make that more approachable and understandable, recognizing people have busy lives. But that's something that we're working on right now, the air sealing insulation pilot and getting that launched. So hopefully we have more data and community feedback so we know what those barriers are. And then we can be incorporating that into programs like this as well.
No, thank you. I, I hope that we really do have a concrete strategy and plan to, to kind of pre-communicate, post-communicate around, especially around certain demographic folks that could take advantage of it. And then also secondarily, I'm hoping that we can really harness our home loan program that we have for those folks to be able to utilize some of these things, that we really incentivize that and encourage folks to utilize that. I mean, this really saves, you know, a family a lot of money, you know, as they move forward. So those are things I just want to encourage us to kind of do that if we move forward with this, this process, that we're, we're kind of really being focused on that. And we'll, and we'll get to the wall piece at another point because I, you know, I've talked about insulation and drilling holes in walls. I know that's going to be a question, I think, that we also need to figure out that piece out too as well. I think that the general public, if we kind of go down this route, they're going to have questions about that. And I think we just, we need to address that rather than letting that get too far down the, down the line. But we can cover that again when we get together later on. One thing that I had a question about with this disclosure piece in particular was it's my understanding that we can, you know, as a city customize some of this, some of what we're doing with this energy disclosure in the report. Am I right about that or am I, am I thinking, thinking wrongly about that?
Councilmember Loman, we can definitely customize. One of the things that came up during the workshops was the importance or the value of the commission and having a regional standard so that we are able to leverage existing maps and tools that if someone's looking for a house, they might not just be looking within the boundary of Bloomington, but we can buy into a larger system. But if there are pieces that we want to have customized or be different, I think that's, that's on the table, but balanced with what I've heard from the commission and to have kind of a similar approach so we do have a standard.
You took my question because that's where I was going. I was going to say, well, how do we do that and still try to do the comparison with other, other cities? And if we do that, because I know we may have our own standards here that we're trying to drive towards, but then how do we then do that, that data comparison, which yeah, that, you've got it. So yeah, we're definitely talking about that within the, the commission. So I think I'm going to stop there. I think I certainly have a lot of questions I can ask, but I think those are the, the ones that are, are important. I, I wanted stress for my colleagues that I think really having a, a solid plan around these folks that, that maybe not take advantage of this normally and really looking at the data that as you've mentioned, and then also making sure that we find ways to continue to, to latch ourselves into our home loan program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Loman. Counsel, additional questions? If there are none, we saw that next steps coming up are community engagement and looking at the racial equity impacts of the assessment, the draft policy language, and then we'll counsel, it'll be back in front of council sometime in the first or second quarter here of this year to look at energy disclosure policies for adoption. Very good. So Ms. Stress, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, Ms. Jones, thank you for your input. Interesting discussion. Thank you so very much. Counsel, with that, we can move on in our agenda to item 8.4, which is our City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, nothing to report this evening.
Nothing to report. Counsel, any members have anything to bring forward? Councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I don't think this will come as a surprise to all of you, but I was very disappointed that I couldn't make the council meeting last week. And also my apologies. I just wanted to put it on the record that, you know, the vote on declaring racism a public health crisis, if I were to be here, I of course would have voted in full support. One of the biggest reasons that I ran for council was because of the vast inequities that we see across Bloomington. And I, I think we all can agree that the events of 2020 have really demonstrated just how devastating those inequities are. And I also believe that 2020 has shown us what many have said for a long time, and that's that racism still exists. And that's explicit racism, but it's also the insidious implicit systemic racism that is really pervasive throughout organizations and structures and decision-making processes. So I am, I'm just really, really proud to be part of this council. I'm really excited that we moved that declaration forward. And I'm really thankful to city staff who worked so hard on just getting it right and doing that in addition to a racial equity business plan. I feel like the progress that's been made over the last year is just incredibly significant. And I know this work has been happening for years in the city, but I feel like we have a very clear path in front of us now and we have clear ways to hold ourselves accountable. And so, you know, moving forward, I feel confident that we're going to do better. We're going to be more equitable and, and I'm just really, really, really thankful. The last thing that I will just emphasize quickly is I think that there's a notion that racial equity work benefits one segment of a population, when in fact, the whole goal of racial equity work is to make sure that all parts of the population are thriving and able to succeed and can live a life full of opportunity. And we do that by paying close attention to those portions of our population that do experience inequities, you know, that are oppressed, that have been left out of conversations. And so I just, I kind of, I wanted to emphasize that because I do think that there may be a misunderstanding about what our ultimate goal is, and it really is improving the, the health of our entire community. And so again, thank you to my colleagues on council, and I just was really excited to see the way that that vote went.
Agreed. Thank you, councilmember Carter. And thank you for your, your voice on this issue over the past year and your, your first year on the council. Greatly appreciated that you've taken this on as something that is important to you and it's clear in, in your, your words and actions. So thank you for that. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really wanted to give a brief update. I had a virtual, virtual community conversation event this past Thursday. It was really, really well attended. I think we ended up having, oh, probably in total, maybe 10 or 15 people online, which was, was pretty great. We covered a lot of territory. It was a really good, really vibrant conversation. We talked about racial equity. We talked about the potential for a new community center. We talked about ways that we can all be responsible for a more respectful public discussion, public discourse in the city of Bloomington. So I just wanted to give an update on that and to publicly thank Tracy Smith with our Community Outreach Engagement Division. She ran technical support and helped me catch questions that folks typed into the chat and all of that. So I just wanted to thank Tracy for, for her assistance. One question that, that a couple of folks did ask about, that I'm wondering if the city manager can give us an update on, is when, when we might be expecting, taking up ordinances and policies related to the implementation of ranked choice voting for our city elections this fall and beyond.
Actually, I think I'm going to kick it over to Ms. Wilson. I think she's got the update on that for us. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmember Coulter. The staff team that is working on this project just laid out a schedule last week. We are hoping to be in front of the council for discussion on March 1st and ordinance adoption on March 22nd is the schedule that we have laid out.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else to bring forward on the council policy and issues update? I see no one coming forward. So with that, counsel, I look for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Nelson. I didn't see your hand down there on the bottom of my screen. Sometimes it gets cut off. My apologies. Councilmember Nelson.
Sorry, Mayor. My apologies. I just wanted to, I know it was alluded to early in the meeting, but just wanted to give a warm welcome to Chief Hartley. And I know that former Chief Potts has moved on with a gross misunderstanding of what retirement means into a different position. But, you know, he obviously served our city well, and I think the most important characteristic of a leader is to develop the people behind them so that when it is an opportunity for them to move forward, there are other people in position to step up and get absolute confidence in, in Chief Hartley and really looking forward to his leadership. And just, just wanted to say, you know, welcome and look forward to getting to know you better and getting information out to the community about that, I think is, is important. So I, our police department is in very good hands, has undertaken a lot of great challenges in the last year and has done so with extraordinary professionalism. I expect that will continue.
Well said, councilmember Nelson. Thanks for saying that. Counsel, anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
I have a motion by councilmember Loman and a second by councilmember Carter to adjourn. Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Hi.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Birthday, birthday boy, councilmember Loman.
Four ten, unbelievable. That's a great present. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We are officially adjourned. Happy birthday, Dwayne. Well done.
Happy birthday.
Thanks for spending your birthday with us. We appreciate it. Thanks to everybody for all your work tonight. Good discussion. Thanks much. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.